As far as I know, I'm looking at staff. The agenda is as presented and I'd entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Crowe, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, now we're going on to public comment. If you have comments for the council, step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Madam Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Bill Austin, in case you didn't know. And, uh, last time I was here was last week and there was a big protest going on, which I didn't know about until I got here. And, uh, the reason I was here was to ask some, for some help from the city. And then the next day I did get some help from Shannon Wood. And she guided me very well to, uh, I ended up in Lacey with washed up. Right at the end there, and I've actually talked to a human being regarding the, uh, the overpass at the top of Finn Hill. Because it's unsafe for anybody walking across it. Anyway, I think I might be able to get somewhere. But whilst I was talking, I understand there was something going on, a big protest. And I heard stuff that I'd never heard before in my life. I had my ninetieth birthday this weekend. And I've been around just about around the world two or three times. I've been to everywhere. And I've never, ever heard what I heard the other week. It was a disgrace. It was disgusting. It was just awful. And I cannot, I have to say something about that. And when I started to talk, some oaf, I'm calling on oaf. If you don't know what the word oaf is, I'm sure he probably doesn't even read, but anyway, it's O A F. It's the first word out of, after the letter O in the dictionary. He want to know what the hell I was doing standing up and talking. And I had to bite my tongue in time, just in time, because I just lost it. This sort of thing should not happen. Those people that were saying all those four-letter words that you just don't hear in other jurisdictions. If this happened in Russia, I believe, for example, they'd probably be serving twenty years in, in the penal service here in Siberia. And you'll never see them again, for example. I have a friend that you probably all know. I just lost it. I forget, um, Kathery Borantus. When she was in the Peace Corps, her and her husband, they were in, uh, the Arab nations. It's Saudi, yeah, Saudi Arabia. And she witnessed a beheading. She witnessed that and she threw up because of what she saw. It still happens today. That guy lost his head because he was rude to the royal family somehow. Here we have a democracy, which is fantastic, that's why I'm here. The trouble is, we have the freedom of speech, First Amendment, which is great. But it's almost gone too far. Madam Mayor, I have to say one more thing. You are a rock. What you did last week, I'm calling you the Palsbow Iron Lady right now. Maggie Thatcher was one. You're the other one. That's all I have to say. Thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Comments from citizens? And thankfully, it's peaceful tonight. Thank you very much. So I'm not seeing any more people standing up. So we're going to move on to marriage reports and council comments. Mr. Eckert, how are you?
I'm okay. Yeah, Bill, I'm sorry, the treatment you got last week. Public comment is always welcome. Public is always welcome at our meetings to speak. Everyone has a chance, has to turn. But we need to be civil. Doesn't matter what you want to say, we need to be civil. You know, I have, I have fought in my elected time for people to have the right to call me names. I have gone up against my fellow board members, this was when I was in the school district, just to argue to allow somebody extra to speak so she could turn around and call me a racist. I believe in that. But we need to be civil. Don't take it out on the other folks that want to speak. That's not right. So everyone's welcome to come, talk. We all signed up for it, but be nice to each other, at least. Yeah, I travel around the world quite a bit, too. One of the places that I can say I saw was, uh, I've been to the DMZ in Korea. I stood in the peace house with North Korean soldiers looking in the windows, having from outside. If you want to know what freedom looks like, you go look at that, because that's the absolute opposite what we have here. So, yeah, people don't understand or respect and appreciate what we have. And on that note, Monday is Memorial Day. Um, please come out, help us celebrate those that did not return.
Mr. Tabor.
Uh, no comments from you, Mayor, thank you.
No comments for me, thank you. I'll go last. Mr. McVeigh, how are you?
Well, I'm good. I apologize for being a little late. I had a emergency car situation. I had to deal with this afternoon, so. Um, good evening to my colleagues, to members of the public who are here. Uh, I don't have much to say tonight, other than it's, it's great to see all the children in the audience. Uh, look forward to hearing from them later. That's awesome, participating in city government. And, uh, I, I imagine Viking Fest was maybe already mentioned? I don't know, was it? No, not really? Okay, well, uh, it was a very successful Viking Fest, as far as I know. Um, and thanks to Kathy Forsey and the Viking Fest Corporation, all their board members and volunteers for all their hard work. Thanks to our police department for keeping people safe. Thanks to the public works department, everybody else involved. So, um, I think spring has officially started. Summer is almost here. And let the tourist season begin in Palsbow. That's kind of the annual Viking Fest, and then we're off and running for the sun. So thanks to everybody.
Mr. Noel.
Um, I'm just glad the sun's out again. Viking Fest, it was great to see people out despite the, the challenging weather, but, uh, it's nice to be here in short sleeves tonight. Looking forward to talking with Deb for hours. I have nothing more.
Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, uh, Norwegian Constitution Day, we honor it here as Viking Fest and it all fell on May seventeenth, Saturday. Uh, those of us who are in the, there was a small weather window, a miracle that for the exact length of the parade, starting at two PM, the rain stopped. And at three PM, it started again. So I'm grateful for that. Uh, and number two, uh, and I debated whether holding this for the, uh, study session, but this afternoon we received a memo from the city clerk's office on the fireworks ballot measure. That's very good, with comments from our city attorney. So the plan is, we're moving toward a citizens advisory vote for this fall on the ballot on the question of personal use of fireworks. As we approach that, Mayor, the only thought I want to share and repeat, I talked about this a year ago. I think we, to get a good response to this either way, I think we need to offer an alternative to our population, a safety valve, if you will. The question of a community fireworks, for, for the community as a whole, rather than people in their driveways. And so at the right moment, I think we need to look at that in front of the advisory issue and not just make it a yes, no, binary, black and white choice. Uh, and then I'll end on this note, having chaired the lodging tax advisory committee the last few years, now hand it over to my colleague, Councilman McVeigh. I know that we received some tentative suggestions for outside groups and organizations that would conceivably be interested in sponsoring a community fireworks event or not. I don't know if LTAC is a proper, uh, venue to begin to air that out, but I just wanted to put that on the record and make sure we give thought to the nuance of this. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Um, I have a couple of comments. Thank you, Mr. Austin, for your statement. I appreciate it. Um, it was, it was a hard meeting last week. Week, and I want to commend the council for your patience and your endurance. Um, those, those things happen, uh, when you're an elected official and, you know, it, it's ugly at times. And, uh, so I just wanted to say thank you for how you all handled it. Um, I thought it was, you did a good job. And, um, I just hope we don't have to do something like that again. It's just, it's always very, very painful. Um, by, um, I got to walk in the parade. I was behind all of the, um, the first responders and, um, the military things. And then there was a gap. And then there was me, along with Rick Eckert, Councilman Eckert, and Ashley Matthews, who is the mayor of Bainbridge Island, and Greg Nance, our representative. And we ran the Viking Fest parade. We were trying to catch, catch up to the first responders, because behind us was the North Kids High School band.
Well, the cheerleaders who always ran us over every time we slowed down.
So we were stuck between, you know, the, the military in the front and the cheerleaders behind us. And I, I, you know, I was winded by the time I finished the parade.
I needed a nap.
Yeah, we were, we were really moving. So, um, I just, I want to say thank you to Kathy Forsey. Um, Kathy's here in the audience. It was a great Viking Fest. It was wet, but people had fun anyway, okay? It was, it was a good time for, for everyone, so. Uh, and I, and thank you to you and Viking Fest and all the volunteers. I know there was a ten, so my hat goes off to you, my dear. Thank you. I went to the media, meeting last night at North Kitsap High School, presented by the Radiant Corporation, along with members of the public, uh, from Kingston and, uh, the YMCA from King, um, from Kitsap and Pierce County. We're all there presenting their vision for a very large piece of property, um, up off of Bond Road. It's something that, uh, Mr. Eckert and I have talked a lot about. Um, it's a, it's, it's a wonderful project in the wrong place and will cost $250 million. So there's some hurdles that we have to deal with here. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can have a constructive conversation to, um, to figure out a complimentary, a complimentary solution to what they choose to do versus what we're doing with the Palsbow Event and Rec Center. So, um, um, had some conversations with Commissioner Rolfes and hopefully we can have, uh, further conversations. But, uh, it was a pretty large crowd. Uh, I thought it was pretty well attended. And, um, um, there's, there's some work that we in city government have to do regarding this issue pretty quickly. So I'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks. The other thing is, um, I am president of something called the Puget Sound Regional Council. And tomorrow is the general assembly where I, um, um, am, I'm leaving the presidency. I've been doing that for two years. And so I have to give a big speech and, and I'm nervous. I don't really, I really don't want to do this. Um, but, um, it's also a tremendous relief and it's tremendous honor to have finished two years of, of service in this way. So I'll be going into Seattle and, and, um, and relinquishing the presidency uh, to a slate of candidates and the voting will occur. So that's kind of cool. And then, um, finally, is Kim here? Kim? She was, she's not here. Kim and I went, uh, along with representatives from Housing Kitsap, went to the, um, Kitsap Housing and Homelessness Coalition Awards today. And the city of Palsbow and Housing Kitsap were granted an award for innovative project and program for the Nordic cottages by this particular or- organization. And we picked up the award today. There was about sixty people there and it was at the Max Hale Center down in Bremerton. And, uh, Representative Tara Simmons was there, who also received an award. Um, th- this is kind of a big deal for, for Palsbow. And I think we're going to get some more awards for our Nordic cottage project, which is, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's getting very close to being done. Uh, it's up off of Iverson, more like Lincoln, right by the library. And it's where the city of Palsbow is building eight units of deeply affordable housing. Now, what does deeply affordable housing mean? It means that you have to make thirty percent or less than the adjusted median income. These are people that are living on social security. And you have to be older than the age of fifty-five. Okay, so it's for elderly, uh, people that don't have a lot of money. That's who is going to be living in these homes. Um, they're very attractive. They are almost done. We're going to have a heck of a ribbon cutting here in a couple of months. And, but, um, I'm very proud that we're completing that project. And I just want to say thank you to the Kitsap Housing and Homelessness Coalition, um, for, um, honoring, um, our project this way. So, other than that, that is all the announcements I have right now. So, um, we're going to be, uh, moving on to board commission and outside agency reports. Any board commission or, Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations on the award. Quite the recognition and more so on your presidency of the Puget Sound Regional Council. That's a really big deal. Our mayor gets to, uh, address the mayor of Seattle and Tacoma and Everett and, uh, further fulfill the original saying that Palsbow punches above its weight class. So thank you for carrying on that tradition, Mayor.
It's, it's over a billion dollars in high rate allocations that go through that, that organization. It's all the federal funding for federal transportation. And, um, it, it basically funnels into the Puget Sound region. And, um, it's, um, it's a, it's a different level of politics over there.
So on outside agency, and perhaps Councilman Noel can help me with this. He and I represented the city this morning at the Kitsap County Association of Realtors, but what they had was an extensive legislative debrief, a statewide debrief on all those issues, bills, provisos that affect housing throughout the state coming out of this session. And, uh, I'll allow Doug to expand on it. What I do want to say, Mayor, is your expert counsel, they had the four cities' planning directors and the county, and we were ably represented by Nicole. Uh, there was a big shout out for the accessory dwelling units, which is the work that the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's been doing for the better part of a year and a half. Uh, and whereas Heather is out of town or unable to make it, the president of the Kitsap County Association of Realtors to a full room. At the last comment was a big shout out to our city planner, Heather Wright, for her heavy lift, representing the four cities and the county in this effort. Doug, would you care to share anything?
Yeah, it, it's just good to see, um, the various parties in our county that are working together to try to figure out how to, um, improve the, the situation of residential housing and how we're all working together. The one thing of note, and we hadn't talked about here, that they did bring up is, uh, both House Bill fourteen oh three and House Bill fifteen sixteen, they got passed with regard to liability insurance around condominiums. And what the ins and outs of that, looking forward to sitting down potentially with Heather and team about, all right, so how does that change the equation? And can we get to a point where we can, we might see more smaller ownership opportunities for residential? So great to see that come out. And then the other big one on the other side, as you might imagine from their point of view, is the House Bill twelve seventeen, which was the rent control and stabilization. And, um, Kim mentioned, whispered to me before she left, we're already seeing some impacts on that. And so that could potentially be advantageous, but there's, there's a lot of challenges on the ownership side with, with that piece, as you know, Mayor. So it was a healthy discussion and, as I've mentioned, it was good to see our planning team there.
Thank you very much. So any other outside agency reports? Mr. Eckert.
Uh, yeah, one, one thing, other thing that last night's meeting kind of brought to the forefront of my mind is, um, that we really, we really do need to get the bond committee, like the three oh five committee, the three oh seven committee, up and running and, and functional. Because regardless of what happens with that project, we know Bond Road just needs to be looked at with the same comprehensive, multi-jurisdictional that three oh five got. And, you know, from Kingston, from the Kingston dot to the three, the intersection here in the city. And we need to, we need to figure out a long-term future plan to fix that road. And it took years to get three oh five. So I think the sooner we get that going, the better. And that's mostly the same players, but we don't have a Bainbridge in that mix, like the other one, Kingston's not a city. So it'll be a little trickier, but that did highlight last night that, because there's just no partner there. You know, Kingston doesn't, it doesn't have a government to be involved in these discussions. So we really need to work on that, because, you know, what, our estimates are thirty-five to forty thousand cars a day coming to the city from that direction. And they're not coming from the small neighborhoods along the way. They're coming from the ferry and, and the various commercial and industrial centers that have grown up along that corridor over the years.
Thank you. Mr. Eckert, I agree. It's, it's time. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the city council for reading and study and are considered to be routine. It is items seven A through F, and I'd entertain a motion.
Uh, move to accept consent agenda items seven A through seven F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye. Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, counsel. And now on to our first business agenda item. This is ordinance number twenty, twenty twenty-five oh seven, uh, the first quarter budget amendments, and this is Deb.
Correct, this, these are included in your packet and these are covering adopting the, um, budget at the fund level and incorporating the amendments approved in the first quarter. And you should have a memo listing there. I believe there's five or six different amendments that will impact those balances. And we are, we do open it up for public comment.
This is the quarterly budget amendments. Uh, there isn't a chance or availability for public comment. If you have comment about the budget amendments, please step to the podium and you have five minutes. Any questions and concerns about the budget amendments as presented? I'm not seeing any comments. So I would entertain a motion, please.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five tag zero seven dash twenty twenty-five, first quarter budget amendments.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Um, I'm going to go ahead and read the ordinance title. An ordinance of the city of Palsbow, Washington, amending the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget adopted by ordinance number twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four nineteen to revise the revenues and appropriations regarding certain funds and approving an ordinance summary for publication. That is the title of the ordinance. Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye. Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, counsel. And now, uh, we're on to Microsoft license upgrades to G five licenses, and this is Brooks.
And Brooks and Boar.
Brooks and Boar, Boar, over here.
Some Boar.
So this, um, as you all are aware, we, uh, um, have the approved, uh, going to G five licenses with Microsoft, lots of changes with that. Um, the biggest change, um, we'll have here is a significant drop in physical hardware here, which is great, um, server-wise. Um, which, um, improves all kinds of things. Um, the budget amendment, or no, it's not a budget amendment, sorry. The items you have in front of you, um, are all within budget and, uh, takes care of the bulk of this work being done this year. There'll be some stuff coming up on the biennium for next year, but most of the work will get done this wor- this year.
And as a reminder, this was approved as part of the budget process and it upgrades our license. The reason it is before council is because it exceeds the mayor's signing authority at seventy-five thousand dollars. And so that is why before council to, um, allow the mayor to sign that. And the G five licenses will not only improve what we have, but it'll, uh, open the opportunity for other future enhancements to that.
Mr. Stern and then Mr. McVeigh.
Uh, question, Brooks. Years ago, as we did the various upgrades, we made sure that we had outside redundancy of our records. Uh, and I think at that time, Debbie, it went to Yakima. We had a contract that had to do with earthquake safety and geographic isolation. As we moved to G five and we're losing some of our hardware here, wh- what's the provisioning for redundancy of record keeping?
Um, that's really the bulk of this whole point of going to G five licenses is to get us out of the old world and into the new world of managing our records. And, and we'll shut down a significant amount of our physical, uh, server infrastructure here and go to the cloud hosted by Microsoft and the government cloud, which is what we need for all of our purposes.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record, Mayor.
And I also clarify to Councilmember Stern, um, I believe what you're referring to is our financial software, which is hosted back east on servers. And there's a redundancy center in Spokane, so if anything comes down, we are able to access through the rep to all of our data that is managed on a different site. So a little different than, than the data that.
We have that on the record, Mayor, both pathways. Thank you, Debbie.
Mr. McVeigh.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Deb and/or Brooks, uh, the hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, um, that, um, you were seeking approval for that was in the budget when we built it. Is that the same amount that was in the budget or has it changed?
Um, it's actually slightly less, if I recall. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but if I recall, it's slightly less.
Cost of that contract includes, um, if, if I remember correctly, it includes implementation as well as the increased licensing fees. And so we did have some licensing fees, so that's, that's why it might be less. And I believe, um, Mr. Rendell has been searching for the best price and dealing with their contractors. And so when we developed that price, it was our best guess. And so, so we are coming in a little less than we had anticipated.
Oh, it is less than the budgeted amount?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Crowe and then Mr. Tabor.
I was looking at the, uh, Microsoft CSP license annual comment document, um, from Wright Systems, Inc.
Yep.
And, uh, so I was just a little confused with the dollar amount of the eighty-five thousand four twenty-six. That's part of that one sixty-six?
That is.
Okay. And then another question I have is in reference to, um, the caveat here of the cancellation within the first seven days, a hundred and sixty-eight hours. I go like, wow, that's awfully slim. I mean, you guys are, um, very much savvy in what you do and knowledgeable, but do they give you a test product to review, um, before getting the product in whole? That's not a lot of time. Or maybe this is, if this is common, if this is standard, then I'll stop talking.
This is pretty standard. And I, I can say we're on G three licenses right now. Um, what, and basically this gives us access to the things that we can see, but we can't do anything with, because we don't have the licenses. It's, it's, it's actually, the change of license is, uh, minimal. But what it impacts to the city for other services, when it comes to data retention and public records and security and all those things, that's the stuff that it starts to impact. And that's where we're getting the help, this one-time fee on top of it, getting the help to help implement it correctly. So huge, huge changes, really impactful changes coming to the city over the next twelve months.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Um, I was just looking at some of the differences between G three and G five. So it's not just capacity, but it's also, um, security. And then this is the same system that's running our conferences, right?
Say that again?
Is this the same system that's running our, our conferences or is that different?
Conferences.
I'm sorry, these, these meetings going to be.
No, no, the, um, the system that's running the meetings, or you're thinking of Granicus or?
Yeah, and then.
That's a different system. Um, this system is for the bulk of the work that's done in the city. Basically email, Microsoft Office documents, PowerPoint presentations. And then what comes out of it is, uh, data storage and data retention and searchability. Um, and then it also provides licensing for, um, securities to suffer at the enterprise level for our desktop computers and our email. And then also changes how we do, um, our spam filtering and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Mr. Eckert, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify in the budget. Um, you said this, this, we know this is in the budget. You said it's slightly less than the budgeted amount, but then you mentioned there may be additional costs in next year. Um, so does that work? I, I can't remember if we budgeted for both years. Email, we don't have those, the documents in front of us now. Email, we don't have those, the documents in front of us now, but, um, do you anticipate that we're gonna need to amend the budget next year for the additional costs, or is it still?
Um, there, we'll be discussing it on the biennium. Um, the piece, there's one piece that we're not getting to this year. Um, we currently have, uh, our phone services is through Ring Central for our, our standard desk phones. And we're looking to move to Teams phone, Microsoft Teams phone, which would be integrated with these G five licenses. There's a calling plan on top of it. What it means to you is our total cost, once it's implemented, will be, um, a third of the existing cost for Ring Central. For the annual ongoing costs, there'll be some implementation charges to help us implement that correctly, because that's a big lift. We have, you know, ninety telephones at the city. Um, but, uh, but moving forward, the cost will actually be less than we're paying now for that service. But that doesn't expire until April of next year.
Okay, that was actually gonna kind of my follow up is.
Yeah.
Standing down the servers that this allows us to do, you know?
We're saving money.
Yeah.
We'll end up saving a significant, we, we won't save some of the cost increase for the license. We'll, we'll recoup a bunch of that cost on shutting down other services.
Yeah, when you come back to us with the second half of it, maybe incorporate in.
Exactly.
What we saved the first part.
A hundred percent.
You know, so we, it helps us a little bit balance the.
Yep, absolutely.
And to help clarify, we did build into the biennium budget the anticipated subscription as we are implementing right now.
Okay.
Be happy to make a.
Go ahead, Mr. McVeigh.
Um, so, um, Deb, Brooks, the, the motion that is written here is, um, does not look correct to me. It says simply approve agreements for installation and annual subscription and authorize the mayor to sign the agreements. It doesn't really say what kind of agreement with the company. Is that gonna be sufficient, or?
No.
Should I include the name of the company?
Include the name of the company as presented, the company.
Yeah, it's, it's up in the summary statement, I believe. It talks, um, Wright Systems is.
Well, I know the name of the company.
Okay.
I'm looking at page seventy five where the sample motion is listed. All right, I, I will give this a try, add a little specificity to it. Uh, approve the agreement as presented with Wright Systems, Inc. For installation and annual subscriptions and authorize the mayor to sign the agreements. Does that sound appropriate?
That sounds fine.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with, uh, uh, approving the, uh, agreements with Wright Systems for modifications to our software packages. Um, any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye. Stern, aye.
Thank you, council, and now we are on to our workshop, and I, we don't need a break, do we? Okay, so we'll just, five minutes, we'll move down and we'll start up again. Thank you. This, let's get this going. So the first thing on our, uh, agenda for the workshop is city administrator and department head comments. Who's up? Yeah, go ahead.
We make it bigger, Brooks?
Okay, I guess you can see.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Erickson already. Mentioned the fact that we were honored today by the Kitsap Housing and Homelessness Coalition, uh, for the Nordic Cottage. Project. I just wanted to, uh, further elaborate with a few pictures. It was such a nice event. Uh, we got to see Representative Tara Simmons fought for us and managed to get a hu- four hundred and twelve do- uh, thousand dollars in the capital budget this year. Year, uh, to be used at the Nordic Cottage project, so. It was great to see her, and I had the opportunity to give her one of the city's awards to commemorate her work in this project. Um, there's some other people that you know, for me, the Nordic Cottage project. Uh, is meaningful in so many ways, but none partnership that we have with Housing Kitsap. Working hand in hand with the housing authority, um, there's executive director. Uh, Heather and and Dean Nail, who's our project manager for Nordic cottages. Um, this, this partnership has just been so successful, and I, I hope we continue with other projects working with Housing Kitsap. The next picture I want to show you is something a little bit different. Um, city of Paulsboro has been very active in the years in supporting and developing crisis intervention team training for our police department. Uh, I've been honored to be a part of that effort for quite a while. I now do a little bit of work with the University of Washington to bring behavioral health training to fire EMS departments. And it was a wonderful thing this week to go to Paulsboro Fire. And to have them launch an eight hour behavioral health outreach training called Coast, right here at the Paulsboro Fire Department. Participants were there from South County Fire, Central Kitsap Fire, South County Fire over in Stahomish. It was a full room and the training was received really well. I'm just so happy to say that in Kitsap County, we're now doing behavioral health training for police, and we're starting to do behavioral health training for fire EMS as well. And that's something to be very proud of. Final picture of the night, um, council has been aware and very, uh, supportive of our. Our entry into the Recovery Cafe that we do at the Recovery Cafe is part of a, a larger. Movement called Recovery Cafe Network. We've gone back and forth with the logo. I had some good input from council member McVeigh and others, uh, involved in this project, and we have a, we have a new logo, so.
I like it.
It's. It's a nice variation of our existing tree by using the shoots. You know, we're showing that the cafe is a place to start, and our recovery center. Is a place where other things can be done, so just wanted to share the graphic. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, um, department heads. Well, who else is back there? Anybody? No, anybody? Department heads? Okay, moving right along, uh, questions and curences to the city council?
Yeah. Just since Chief and Kim are both over there, um. Have, have either of you had a chance to look at the, the bill that was just signed, um, as far as grants for, for, um. From the state for police? Because I, um, in the final version, it includes police behavioral special, peer support, whole number of things. But there's also a lot of, uh, caveats to be qual- to qualify for it, and I don't know how we stand as far as that goes. I know we don't have the sales tax, but the training and the other things that would fall under you all.
I think it probably gives us the best opportunity to pursue some things that would be complementary to the RRC. Peer support and some other, uh, services like that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just if, I'm not sure Mr. McVeigh made this part of the meeting. If he, if he did, I'll cut it short. So we all received, as I noted in the business agenda, the very good memo from the offices, the city clerk and city attorney. Approaching the advisory vote on private firework usage within the city for this fall. As part of the general ballot. Again, I, I maintain that we would be wise to have a discussion. Where it isn't an all or nothing proposition about fireworks within the community, but again. Be able to offer or at least give some thought to a community event in lieu of all this private usage. I think the reason I bring it up again right now is Mr. McVeigh. It came up the last two years peripherally at the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as an idea for a potentially new event. A couple organizations in town, I won't name them, have softballed the idea that they. They could be host for it. Anyway, that is not to presume an outcome or even suggest, but rather in front of the advisory vote. That we give some thought to, uh, the community, understanding there might be an alternative to private usage instead of giving it up as a notion altogether. Wanted to park the idea of LTAC as a vehicle to explore. Because it's come up before. Uh, and then secondly, I want to take advantage of, uh, Officer, uh, Dave Waterhouse being here. I did a, a boat along, as my colleague Councilman Tabor did about a month ago. I've been meaning to report out on it, and our agenda has just been crazy, Mayor, as you know, and it didn't seem to afford that opportunity. So a couple impressions from the boat along. Uh, when we take a, a view and see the beautiful Liberty Bay and the twinkling water and the beautiful white hull boats out there, we just think what a lovely community we have, and we do. But I was shocked to learn, and we. Motoried about, uh, that the vast majority of the boats that were moored out in our bay are not guests. They're like transient floating housing. Um, and in some cases, uh, they, there are cited criminals living in there. I don't want to go further than that, Chief. I know you know what I'm referring to. Uh, and the observation in the discussion was that our little sheltered bay with its easy ready access to. Uh, facilities, including washrooms, markets, et cetera. Is, might be one of the choice locations in the Puget Sound right now to attract this type of, uh. Unfortunate use because. Incidental to our motoring around that day there was the first outing of our pump out boat that we have a contract with. So that was entirely coincidental, and we moored alongside him and had a conversation, but. That use is great among the guests and other permanent boaters, but there's no use among the transient population of the pump out. So it's also a concern about the environment. Uh, Chief, I, I don't mean to put anybody in the spot. We didn't coordinate. But I don't know if Officer Waterhouse yourself would have any follow up remarks for my colleagues.
I'll just say that Officer Hausberg is here. He runs our marine program, and they are on top of the issue. He has identified all the, uh, derelict vessels. We're working to pursue enforcement and to have them either le- uh, leave voluntarily, which we prefer, or we'll follow the course of the law and remove them. Uh, but that's all underway, and we have, uh, trained two new, uh, marine officers that are assisting him. So that will increase our enforcement efforts out there quite a bit.
Yeah, I reached out to the chief, what was that, about two or three months ago?
Yeah.
Said, we have got to start patrolling the bay, and they can't be out there any more than thirty days. Um, and, um, so, thank you, Chief. Um, we're, we're aware of this and has, has been for some time. We need a harbor master.
So if.
And that's a conversation we should have with the port. And.
Absolutely.
Uh, we need a person that's out there patrolling every, every day and writing down numbers. And when they stay past their thirty days, they call the police, and then we basically evict them from the bay. But we have to have that systematic approach, and that requires a harbor master, somebody out there. Checking, checking the numbers, patrolling on a very, very straightforward, uh, process. And, um, um, it, it has gotten bad, and we need to stop it.
So my understanding, Mayor, is this is gonna be on the agenda for our joint meeting with the Port of Paulsboro next Wednesday, correct? All right, so we can talk about it further then.
And I just want to conclude, I want to pay compliments, Chief, to Dave. His technique of engaging what could be a problematic situation, because some of these folks don't want to be bothered, right, to put it gently. Is extremely diplomatic, personal and relational. And not confrontational. So my credit to you, Dave, and I'm just so glad we're reinvigorating, so to speak, our marine unit right now. Perfect timing.
All right, um, let's move on unless there's any other comments, okay? Let's move on to the park pollinator program, uh, from Pearson Elementary. And I, Jeff is not here today, but so we have Rachel Hornet, who's gonna come on, come on up, guys.
Grab some extra chairs.
Grab some extra chairs, come on up and visit with us.
They come speak. There we go. Um, three extras, so let me get this queued up. Grab the end of them.
You do. Stand tell them.
Chair. Here, and then I'll put it for screen.
Just hit that first spot, take it from there.
You didn't watch. I gotta show the. I gotta show the slideshow. Where am I missing?
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm happy to introduce Principal Craig Frick from Hildor Pearson Elementary School and some of the students that are supported through the Associated Student Body and Anchored for Life. They have been teammates developing this wonderful Pulsbo Pollinator Project Awareness Program, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you for having us. And thank you to Rachel Cornet and Jeff Osmech for sponsoring us to be here tonight to speak with you on our pollinator project that we've been working on, our Anchored for Life program. Our students will be talking a little bit about that. It's a program that we work together with the Navy on to provide for our kids out at our school. And also, these students are representatives of our student leadership team. So today I have with us Hunter Bog, Cal Guest, and Riker Jones, who are going to be presenting information on our project.
Thank you for coming, guys. Appreciate it. I'm glad you're here.
Riker, you're up.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Firstly, I would like to introduce our project. It is a pollination project with multiple organizations and the Pulsbo Parks and Recreation to install a pollinator corridor in multiple parks. Last year, we installed the corridor in American Legion Park. Purpose of this year's project is setting up possible expansion to other parks in coming years. Our project's two main purposes are to educate people on the necessity of pollinators and this is keeping their habitats sustained, and also to educate people on how there are too few pollinators and how there are even less that are native to our area. Pollinators themselves are a huge part of the environment, being in the sense that they are vital to food production and, sorry, and the sustainability of the environment as a whole, because they pollinate the, most of the foods that are grown on our farms and out in nature. And without bees, there would be nothing for deer to eat, which would get eaten by wolves, and they're basically the atlas of the food chain. Earlier, as you may recall, corridor, a pollinator corridor is a collection of native plants and pollinators that together make an area more lush and it's give native plants room to expand and kind of work as a bee and other pollinator highway.
Um, so I was at the first sort of area in our first, that last year was our start of this project. It is student-led by the Hildor Pearson Anchored for Life Navy-supported program. We started by measuring and like a month prior to the like actual planting, we measured and created a map. Now, we chose American Legion Park because it's right next to the sound. And so there was a lot of clay, which mason bees need to protect their eggs. It was also very public, so if we needed to inform anybody, we could like put up a sign or something. And then a month later, we started landscaping. So we took soil and we laid it down on like patches of grass. And then we raked it to get it like mixed in with the soil that was like already there, I guess. And then we dug holes for like to plant the plants, and then we actually planted them. We then planted, or not planted, put in four mason bee houses to put the mason bees in, I guess. And then we, we got our, most of our supplies from Crown Bees and Salish trees after making calls to Crown Bees Garden Centers and Valley Nursery. This was also supported by the Pulsbo Parks and Recreational Center, or people, I guess. I don't know. And we are really excited to continue this project this year.
Thank you, Cal. Hunter?
I'm going to be speaking about why native plants are important. They're important because, one, they're better pollinators for local fruits like pears, apples, cherries, plums and peaches. And two, they use the local climate like heavy rain and dry summers. Plus, bees recognize them. Some native plants are the checkered mallow, yarrow, bacilia, commas, serviceberry, Oregon grape, large-flowered Columbia, big blue pine and Pacific rhododendron. The Pacific rhododendron is my favorite flower. Some facts about it are it gets 15 to 30 feet tall. It's the only native rhododendron, and it's the state flower. It likes partial shade and has vibrant blooms and evergreen foliage. It attracts pollinators and blooms from April to June. Most native plants bloom from March to September, but some bloom earlier or later. Some early blooming plants are the Indian plum, Pacific rhododendron and Oregon grape. Some late-blooming plants are the bacilia, Pacific aster and serviceberry. You can help bees by planting different kinds of plants that bloom at all different times. You can open a community garden, even just plant a single flower. Every bit helps. Planning a Pacific rhododendron helps a lot because it grows to be huge and has countless flowers for bees to pollinate. Thank you for supporting our project.
Earth Day is also an important opportunity for our project and other projects in, about the natural world because it's a chance to inform people and learn about it. I was personally at our booth at the Earth Day event in Fish Park, and I learned many things that I did not know. I learned some things about the Saquama tribe, a lot of other stuff. Yeah. Earth Day is just a really good opportunity to learn things like that and.
Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what we did. So for the, regarding the mason bee houses, we put in colors and sticks to distinguish the houses to each of the bees. And then, I don't know when, like, two or three months ago, we, we like harvested the bees and we put them in the freezer. And then later, we're going to like put the, like.
Launch them again.
Yeah, we're gonna just put them back in and send them off, I guess.
The pollinator corridor is important for the local environment. You can support us by sponsoring our project or even planting a native pollinating plants at home or putting up bee houses. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great job. I want to, yeah, I want to. I want to talk a little bit about some of the other work the students are doing. We have about 25 kids altogether that are working on this project. Right now, we've actually been working with the pollinator project to work on early marketing. Some of what I'm going to show you now are the efforts of the students in creating marketing stickers. The idea is that these stickers are going to be available for sale around the community so that we can raise funds to further this project, whether that is to develop more native plants locally, to purchase plants for installations, and to help support purchase of, of those plants, trees and soil in the different locations that we're looking at. All of this art is student, student-generated art. We're able to represent Pulsbo Parks and Recreation, the Pollinator Project and Hildor Pearson Elementary School, each of the, also on the stickers. The students were tasked with looking to represent the local environment and habitat that we have here. There's going to be a group of different stickers, and we'll have those hopefully for sale within the next month or two at local businesses that would like to host, host these stands, at checkout stands and other areas in their business. Students from third to fifth grade, responsible for creating all of the different images. Also like to thank Nick Johnson of Semi-Creative, who was integral in helping put this together for us. He helped to create all of the stickers, take the student art and frame it for us. And the presentation that you're looking at now, the format and everything he helped put together. So he's been very helpful to the project as well. Finally, our large sticker that we'll be producing are for business sponsors that would be interested in providing either, you know, support for whether it be soil or plants or funds to help support the project. It's very important. It's a mostly volunteer-led project. We do have some funds from various groups in the community, including the Rotary Environmental Committee and parks and some different grants that we've been able to attract. But sponsors in the community will help us to expand into new installations that we're looking at for the future and for the fall. For our students, this is a volunteer opportunity, and they're they're really excited with working with the community. I think it also brings a lot of recognition to this project and the importance of pollinators, and also supports student leaders in our schools. And this is a great example of student leaders right here tonight, presented to all of you. The future for the project areas that we're looking at with parks initially might be the waterfront park, expanding a little bit more on American Legion Park. Large-scale parks with flowering trees and things like Centennial Park could help to create locations where we can put out information about the pollinator corridor and the importance of bees. But also, it's about getting people out in the community and planting pollinators and thinking about pollinators when you're planting your gardens. You know, who knew if I waited long enough, my garden was going to get in vogue again and my front yard. Now it's a meadow and green space, not just a green space for mowing. I appreciate that. So everybody can take part in thinking, hey, when the dandelions are out, this might be important for bees and, and thinking of those installations. So these are things that we're going to continue working on. This is a long-term project for our school. The kids were involved last year. We're continuing this year, and we'll be working on it again next year. Riker, who's headed off right now over to the middle school, open house night this afternoon, said, you know, if you're doing this again in the fall, I might want to come back and help. And that is just an amazing spirit of volunteerism that we're trying to build in our students, some great leadership. So thank you. Appreciate your time tonight and allowing us to present this to you.
Council, questions? Mr. McVeigh?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for dressing up and looking so nice. Really, really impressive. I noticed some of you had your presentation on index cards. I used to do that when I was your age. That's always great training for later in life, so thanks. So one, one comment and then a question. The, the comment is, you probably maybe have already thought about this, but as you're thinking, you mentioned and you're going to be having pop-up stands, as I understand it, to sell the stickers at area businesses. Market would be a great opportunity. If you haven't thought of that one already, you can contact them in advance, and they, they offer free space oftentimes to neighborhood organizations, community organizations, so. Yeah, they're very interested in bees, I'm sure, given what they do. So that would be great. And then I, did I hear, did I understand correctly that you can freeze bees and they come back to life?
We actually refrigerate them.
Oh, you were.
Yeah. But yeah, we put them in the refrigerator. They stay at the 37 degrees in a dark space, and then we put them in. Between driving from the school to American Legion Park, it's like eight minutes. They were starting to wake up as I was putting them in the bee houses, and I wish I had my camera out because they were climbing out. They were waking up. They took a look at the location and they went off to go pollinate. It was amazing that quick.
Okay, interesting. Well, thank you again.
Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, so good to see you again, Chris. And yeah, thank you for the presentation tonight, kids. Great job, great job. And thank you for starting at Legion Park. Wonderful location, and it, all you've done is add to it with what you've done. It's wonderful. Important, I mean, the pollinator issue is something people just don't think enough about. It's great that you're thinking about it young, as you go off to the middle school, especially the high school. North Kitsap has a wonderful agricultural program. If this is something you're interested in, you know, keep an eye out. Miss Ryder, yeah, Miss Ryder's the teacher over there. Wonderful track. You can do your, if you, if that's something, you can do all your ST, your CTE credits and all the way through. My son did that for four years. Animal science, plant science. It's a great, it's something really interesting, and you learn something really new, really different each year, and takes the place of some of the classes. But they have the greenhouses over there. I think the plant sales this week for all the things that students are, are growing and selling. So for folks that aren't related to this, but if you're interested, go over and support the students, buy plants. But yeah, just great job, folks, tonight. Great to see you again, and count me in on some stickers. I will definitely support and buy some stickers.
Awesome. Thank you, Rick.
Mr. Noel, go ahead.
How do we donate?
Yeah, I was gonna say, how do we?
That is a great question.
How do I get you guys money?
We'll be collecting money actually through our ASP because the students are going to be selling the stickers. So we're going to have a website with a link for, for payment. We're working on now.
All right. So Rachel, if you could get that back to us so that we have a way to. And I might drop you a note.
This is so important. I, I still live on a farm. I have nine acres and I have fruit trees. And, you know, one of the things that it's so important that you protect the bees because without the bees, we don't have food. It's really almost that serious. So it's really, really important. The other thing I'd like to tell everyone is when we do roadwork and construction around the city, we try to plant as many native plants as we possibly can. If you go down the Johnson Parkway, you will see Oregon grape. You will see the lupins. You will see native plants, salau, all of it. Because, you know, we're very conscious of the bees and how our ecology works locally. So this is a great presentation. You guys did a great job. Really good work.
Thank you for having us.
Mayor, before they leave, on behalf of the city, the police department would like to give all our young presenters a department coin, just in appreciation for what you're doing and the work you did for the city. And if you have siblings, they can have one too. And thanks, moms and dads, for bringing them tonight, letting them be here.
And sometimes when you wonder why you're on the City Council, I want you to remember this evening, okay? Okay, we're going to move on now. Real, really well done, guys. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we're going to move on to item D, which is potential ownership change at the Hostmark Apartments and Hostmark Renovations, and this is Kim.
Well, it's impossible to follow that presentation. That was wonderful, but I will try. Hostmark Village Cove Apartments, as Council knows, is a 120-unit affordable housing project here in Pulsbo. In terms of size and the population that it's housing, I would say it's our most important. In terms of size and the population that it's housing, I would say it's our most important affordable housing asset in city limits. Folks that live there are seniors, individuals with disabilities. It's kept affordable because of project based vouchers. And through the years that I've worked here in Poolsmo, I've heard from nearly every council member about the high value that they place on Poolsmo and the importance that this apartment complex is to our community. When I heard recently that the current owner had put the property for sale. And a company called Related Affordable had entered into a purchase agreement for Hostmark Apartments. I knew this would be something of very high interest to council and the public. So I invited a representative from Related Affordable, Ian Dubrowski, to join this presentation today. Before I invite Ian to speak directly about Related Affordable and his plans. His company's potential plans for Hostmark Apartment, I want to say a few words for folks that are watching the perhaps that live at Hostmark or are interested in the residents well being that are there. There are no changes coming in the short term. Hostmark Apartment will retain its project based vouchers until twenty thirty nine. There is no risk of the units at affordable at Hostmark becoming unaffordable. So again, there's no immediate changes that are happening. The current contract for project based vouchers extends until twenty thirty nine. I invited Mr. Dubrowski to speak today about changes that might happen over the next few years. And as far as I understand, will not threaten the affordability of Hostmark Apartments. So with that, I think I'll invite Ian to join and talk a little bit about Related Affordable and potential plans for Hostmark Apartments.
Hi, Kirk. Hi, Kim. Thanks for the introduction. It's really great to see everyone. Apologies I couldn't be there in person. I'm based in Los Angeles, but I will be in town next week. So if anybody would like to meet in person, I'm happy to do so. So my name is Ian and I work for Related Affordable. Which is one of the largest owners of affordable housing throughout the country. And so since our inception, we've never taken a single unit out of affordability. In fact, our plan for Hostmark Village is to extend the affordability commitments. And so that's kind of why we're here today. So back in twenty twenty two, the the current owner of Hostmark Village had put this property along with a number of other properties up for sale. And it was part of a competitive bidding process to own and acquire the property. And we basically had told the seller that, you know, we, we can't match what other buyers are going to be willing to pay, you know, through through different types of of executions where they would look to do other things that may not be in the best interest of the residents. But if you work with us over the next few years. We will kind of create this structure where we can enter into a purchase option and work to raise the money that we need to acquire, renovate and preserve the affordability of Hostmark. And so our plan is to do a big renovation here as well as extend the section eight contract that currently encumbers the property for seven more years. As well as to enter into a new agreement, a regulatory agreement with the state of Washington that would keep the property affordable through at least twenty fifty six. And so we're here tonight to kind of make an introduction to our company and and just kind of get you guys to to really just share with what with what our preliminary plan is and what we're trying to do. And so we'd like to focus on on doing some renovations that the current owner missed or perhaps didn't do a great job of. Like they only replaced a few of the roofs. There's aluminum wiring in the exterior electrical lights. That can be a fire hazard, replacing the plumbing they didn't touch. And so that's kind of what we're we're trying to do is is raise money through Kitsap County as well as the state of Washington. To purchase the property, renovate it and extend the affordability commitments here. And so we're we're here asking for your support in our ask to Kitsap County for part of their CIAH funding. As well as something that Kim and I have discussed over the last few weeks is the need for additional services here. So perhaps a city, a part time, city sponsored service coordinator. That that would be something we'd be interested in, in, you know, having an agreement on as well. But really, we're asking for your support to Kitsap County at this meeting. And Kim, if there's anything I missed that we've kind of talked about over the past few weeks, please let me know.
I think that's a very helpful summary. There there might be some confusion about what a purchase option means. I know that Related Affordable is interested in acquiring the property, but it sounds like it's not definite. Could you just help us understand what a purchase option is and isn't, please?
Yeah, so it's it's a signed agreement with the seller that we have the right to acquire the property at a certain price. And so that agreement's active over the next three years. Where we're, we're trying to go to the state of Washington and enter into these new affordability commitments. And so it's signed. We have, you know, all the rights to the property over the next three years.
Council members, I think Ian would welcome your questions if you have any.
Mr. Eckert and Mr. McFay.
Yeah, Ian, you mentioned renovation. So if you were to, if you do get this property as planned. One thing, the only thing I don't like about Hostmark Village there is that I look at our Nordic cottages and we've been able to achieve two stories and take advantage of that height.
Right.
What we can do in the same square footage. If you're going to be renovating, do you think the renovations would be extensive enough that you would you would look at renovating to that in that way of going upward? Or of the property by by adding some height?
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to add any, any new units here. We're kind of just focused on preserving as best we can what's available. And so that, you know, that would be doing a comprehensive renovation, working with the city and working with the residents and kind of understanding what they need and they see, but it wouldn't involve adding additional units.
Mr. McFay.
Thank you, Mayor. Ian and maybe Kim too. Our advanced materials referred to a part of your request is the city of Poolsmo to include a letter of support to Kitsap County for three million dollars of CIAH funding to help partially offset the cost of the renovation. I I think most of us, I think I could speak for, and certainly the public knows nothing about what the CIAH program is. If we could talk a little bit about that. Is three million dollars, how much money does the county generally have available through that program? Is three million dollars all of it? A small portion of it? Need some more details around that, please.
Ian, would you like to start and I'll fill in what I'm able or?
Yeah, if you want to start, I know you've kind of been working with the program longer than I've been around it. So if there's something.
Please correct me if I'm misstating anything. So just like the city of Poolsmo has a one tenth of one percent affordable housing tax. The county does as well. So the city of Poolsmo and the city of Bainbridge Island doesn't participate in the county CIAH program. So it's it's funds that are collected from other Bainbridge Island for the purposes of affordable housing. Councilmember Newell did some investigation and there actually is a disadvantage for programs from Poolsmo that apply for these funds. Because we do collect our own, I think there's a a competitive disadvantage to programs from Poolsmo, but but not an insurmountable one. I don't know how much is in the county's fund. Mayor, do you have any knowledge? That's another one I'm happy to.
I believe it's seven million dollars this year.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Six to seven million a year is what they're collecting.
Correct. And and the renovations that we're proposing would would, you know, well exceed the three million dollars. It's just, you know, we don't want to, the way we want to do business is the right way. And we want to make sure that if, you know, we're coming in to own the property, we're we're fixing everything that needs to be fixed. You know, the residents are happy. We're doing things the right way. And so that's the way we would like for this to be done.
And Ian, I don't mean to speak for Related, so apologies in advance, but just in my experience and applicants coming and applying for funds, if there's a lesser amount that's granted. That's typically an expectation for this process. So while the ask is for three million dollars. My hunch is that there might be some flexibility unrelated to it.
Yeah, that that's right. And you know, we think, so really the the benefits to the city and to the county would be the extended affordability commitments where the the property is currently encumbered by the section eight contract that expires in twenty thirty nine. It's currently encumbered by an agreement with the state that expires in roughly ten years. But we're proposing to extend the affordability through the state till at least twenty fifty six. The section A contract till at least for another twenty years from next year. So that would be twenty forty six. And then under the CIAH program, there's a minimum affordability requirement until twenty sixty six, actually. So that would be, so we're we're proposing to keep the property affordable for for the next forty plus years, really.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, in reference to the renovations, what what does that look like? You know, would some of the tenants be displaced or do the renovations impacted as such like that? Maybe I'm getting a little too far ahead, but oftentimes you hear about, you know, surprise with someone having to leave their home because of a renovation that was planned or
Right.
I'm thinking of.
No, that's a great question. So a lot of the work that the current owner did was a lot of like cosmetic work. Flooring, painting, appliances. And so a lot of that is going to require, I know there was a renovation in twenty twenty where residents were displaced and kind of haphazardly. And so that's a lot of the work that we're proposing is like plumbing work and you know, electrical work. And so of course, there'll be some some instances where residents may need to temporarily leave their unit. But a lot of the work, none of the work will permanently displace any residents, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you for that clarification. So even if they had to temporarily leave their units, and I'm assuming that there is going to be some support funds or compensation for that. So do you?
Yeah, yeah, right. So so we're still working with our construction team to figure out if people, you know, go through every unit and figure out if people need to leave their units for exactly how long. But we would put people in hotels as needed. You know, and and we would be like leaving people out. You know, or kicking people out of their homes for the day, if that's what you're.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then there's another piece is I understand is Hostmark has a pretty exhaustive waitlist. And so will you work with that waitlist with another party that will continue uninterrupted? Or is is that something that hasn't quite come into play yet as you think about this?
Um, so so there's like a very specific process for managing a waitlist. And so you know, as units open up, it's you have, you go in line as to who's available on on the waitlist. So if if people do leave, we'll still continue to call through the waitlist and try to get people in as quickly as possible, but but as far as the other residents who are not residents, but people who may be living elsewhere that that may like get into Hostmark, they're just going to have to wait their turn.
Ian, I think the the point of the question is if somebody's been on the waiting list for two years and the sale goes through, will they lose their place in line?
Oh, no, 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 they will not.
Thank you, Ian.
Okay. I think it was Mr. Eckert and then.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask how if we knew what the occupancy was, how the percentage, but it sounds like it's
It's totally.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, there is a long waitlist here. It's, I mean, it's a, it's a great property. That's why we'd like to preserve it and and, you know, and and keep it really sustainable for years to come, not just for the next five plus years.
Thanks, Mayor. Ian, Kim. Certainly to me on the surface, all this sounds very good. Thank you, Ian, and to you and your company for your interest in in the project. And for your commitment to keep the complex affordable. That's, that's, you know, music to our ears, if you will. But I would, speaking for myself, I'm sure how my other colleagues feel. I would appreciate the mayor and our staff taking a little deeper dive into this and coming back to council with the recommendation on whether it would be appropriate for council to issue a letter of support for the three million dollars and some of the county's available funding before taking council action. I think that would be appropriate and very helpful.
I agree. I agree, Mr. McFay. I think that's totally appropriate and we can certainly do that. You know, we'll do a little more homework and make sure we really need since we elected to keep our affordable housing tax, going to the county and asking for theirs is 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 a brave ask. So, you know, we really have to have our ducks in a row. We're going to do it. So we need to do it. We'll, we'll do a little more homework and make sure that everything's, you know, buttoned down. Mr. Stern.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Ian.
Yeah.
Question for you. This is your, as I understand, a related first project in Washington State. But you have considerable experience elsewhere. Can you share with my colleagues what attracted you to this project at this place versus all the other myriad subsidized housing? Without sharing any proprietary.
Sure. So so this project came to us as part of a portfolio of over sixty properties. And so so this is not, we've had, you know, very great success in other states where other cities are very happy. So this property kind of was part of a portfolio where the seller wanted to exit the affordable housing business. And, you know, we are going to try to fight to to preserve it. And so, you know, we think it's it's a great property. You know, I I personally love the city of Poolsmo from from my visit there. It was great. You know, it's it's a property where I think there's, you know, it's it's operating well, but there is still room for improvement. And so you know, I I think it was really the the portfolio of properties like this around the country where where Hostmark is 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 one of the the many. And we've had great success. Like I've said, where other cities have been very happy with the results in Arizona and you know, in California and in Colorado and in other states like Texas and all over, really.
All right. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, just following up on what Gary said, as we get into this, just the mechanics of how the submission would go to the CIAH team. It looked like there was a calendar of events. It's not like it's a rolling thing. There's pieces to this and, you know, it's just the mechanics. Does it come from Related? Does it come from the city? Is there a third party? Is it Kitsap? Just into that standpoint, so that as you do the recommendation, just.
Yeah, so this would be like.
On her foot like you, as best we can.
We need to do a little more homework on this and and make sure that we move forward in a way that's going to make sure that the residents of Hostmark Apartments are protected as best we can. That is my primary interest. Okay, so.
And that's a good point. It's not so much related. It's about our residents that live in our city.
That's.
And if it is related, that's got this commitment, then that's great. If it's somebody else, but how do we commit to supporting the people that live at Hostmark?
I'm the mayor and you guys are the city of city council and our responsibility and our empowerment comes from our citizens and we want to make sure that our citizens at Hostmark Apartments are well taken care of and Related looks like a really dynamite company, but you know, we have to do a little more homework and we also have to do some homework with the county to make sure that we don't step on a bunch of toes there if we do this. So Ian, we gotta do some homework, but we're grateful that you're interested in our community.
Yeah. No, it's great. I'm sure, you know, you guys have never heard from the existing owner and that's kind of our you know, plan to do better for the residents is that, you know, something at Hostmark that you don't like, like you can, you know, Kim can always call me. You know, or you kind of know who we are and and know about our company and and our goals. You know, or you kind of know who we are and and know about our company and and our goals. And so to just preface this, still preliminary, you know, we have the ability to do this over the next couple of years and you know, we're gonna, yeah, we completely understand your your concerns, you know, for the residents and that's, you know.
Thank you.
We're happy to, yeah.
And I just want to repeat something that I said just in the introduction. There are no changes happening in the short term. Residents of Hostmark that are watching, there is nothing on the calendar that will affect their residencies. This is a going to be a slow process and one that will take our due diligence. And Ian, I just want to say how impressed I've been so far in your communication skills, the fact that many folks have come from Related to meet with us and learn more about Polesville. We look forward to continuing the relationship. Thank you very much.
Mr. Accret and Mr. Newell. You're good?
Yeah, and I agree. We need to make sure we approach this the right way and and with the most information that protects our our residents. And yeah, this is because we keep the money from this ourself. It is does feel a little bit like a bold ask of the county. However, the other tax that we don't have the ability to keep ourself, we apply for projects that we repeatedly denied. I'm sure with a hundred percent occupancy and a long waitlist, the residents of Hostmark do not just come from Polesville. They come from all over Kitsap County. So it's a project that supports all of Kitsap County. And I'll just highlight, we remember when Kitsap County needed help in Kingston, we supported Kingston, you know, rather than a county. So yes, it feels bold, but I think if it's the right thing to do, we should do it. And even if there's some folks that maybe feel like, how dare we? Well, because we do dare, because we reach outside our city limits when it helps the county. And sometimes they need to reach into our helps the county.
Councilmember, if I could respond to that in a slightly different way, I very much appreciate your comments. But something that the mayor and I have been talking about around opioid settlement dollars, just because we collect them as a city doesn't mean we can't coordinate closely with the county that collects them as well. I think that opportunities for the county and the city to contribute both as appropriate and work closely together with these funds instead of bifurcating and saying you do these and we do these. I I hope that this project becomes an opportunity to collaborate with the county because we're going to be a lot stronger if we're working together. So thanks for the comment.
Yeah, I think Doug said it before, you know, some of these are arbitrary lines on maps. The people live on both sides and and the reality is it crosses the lines. So we can't just stop because of a line on the map. And this is one of those times where I think, yeah, we need the the line needs to be less important than the end goal.
So what we'll what we'll do is we'll we'll work on this internally in house and we'll figure out what the next steps are and do our homework and come back when we knew we know a little more. Ian, I want to thank you for joining us. Where are you anyway?
I'm based in Santa Monica, California. And so I work on projects all over the West.
You're on airplanes a lot. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for joining us and stay tuned for next steps.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate everyone's time. Looking forward to working together.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we are going to do carryover, beginning balance, quarterly financial reports, B and O tax update, annual comprehensive financial report, and biennial budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. And if that isn't a mouth, isn't if that isn't a mouthful, I don't know what is. So everybody just settle in. We've got we've got numbers.
Does anybody want to grab a snack?
Bro.
That's right. They all clear out. Protein keeps your weight. Unfortunately, yes, it comes under council's budget. You have to pay for those snacks. I can I can just sing that. The presentation, right?
You want to be involved in that?
No, go ahead. I got two new things going on. Okay. It's all yours, Deb.
Thank you.
We gotta wait everybody to get back to the seat.
The first thing I want to just show everybody is we have we have some of our reports up on our website. And so just reminding everybody what's up there. So if you go to the City of Polesville website, www.cityofpolesville.com, you can come to departments and then go to finance and then go to finance reports and documents. And so it's a wealth of information. So right now, under I will show you under the budget documents, you can see your two thousand and twenty five, twenty six final budget, and it is in PDF form and it's bookmarked. So it's quite large. It's probably over six hundred, seven hundred pages, but there's some sections of it, and it's it's very interesting when people come into the city. It's it's amazing what you can discover about the budget. And actually, when people in the city start working on the budget, you learn a lot about the city.
Yeah, you know, if you're a numbers person, you really need to take a look at the big budget. I mean, the statistical information in it is really good. So.
And even and even the mayor's transmittal at the beginning really talks about what we plan in the next two years and some of the things that have happened and some of the challenges. So it's a lot, but it is there for information. And then we also do the but to it. And what we also have up there right now is we have our monthly statements. So the last sales tax report we have up there is for February. Those are dollars received and we're gonna, I won't open those because we're gonna look at all of those in a minute. Our real estate excise tax and the financial status report that we'll go over as well tonight. And then we also have what's up there right now, which really is is it's an unofficial our annual financial report. And this is, I mean, all of these reports of what we've been working on probably the last four or five months, especially the the final budget document as well as the annual comprehensive financial reports. Right now it is unaudited and we are working with our auditor. So it is in draft form. And as they go through the audit, there may be some things that change. But right now you can get a pretty good picture of all our financial statements. And it's funny, we talked to the auditor and every time we talked to her, she goes, wow, it's like a hundred and twenty six pages. And I thought, isn't that normal? I don't know. So there's quite a bit there. So there's a lot of statistical section in the back. The first the first one is as you look at it, as you have your introductory letter, and then you have what you call your management discussion and analysis. And it looks at all of your numbers and puts it in a word form. And so it's hopefully the readers can follow a little bit and talks about how some of our numbers compared to prior years and going forward. And then it goes into your statements, which we convert, we do a whole Gatsby reporting or we do it in accordance with Gatsby. We do full gap reporting. So you have your first statements, which is your net position, which is citywide and incorporates everything in corp including all of the assets, all your roads, all of your infrastructure depreciation on those. Yeah. And then we go into statement activity, and then you go on to your modified statements, which are fund statements. And in the back, you have your statistics section as well as your notes to the statement. So if anybody wants to prove that and has any questions, my door is always open and everybody in the department gets to share in a portion of that. It is not a one person project, and so we really incorporate it. So many people in the department can help you. Obviously, we have some some people that are a little bit more experts and involved in it, but that is up there if anybody's interested in reviewing. So I just wanted to let you know that all of that information is available on our website. Now, looking at our financial statements. So the first thing I wanted to, what we I thought we would report. Let me make this a little bigger. Hopefully you can see some of it. So this is our sales tax report, and this is for dollars that are received through April, but are through activity of January and February. So as you can see, in February, we were slightly down from the prior year. But year to date, we are right where we should be in it. In two months of the year is hard to measure. But we are there. We should be at about, if we look at the entire budget, if you take two months in accordance, we should be in about sixteen, a little over sixteen percent. And we're about fourteen. But if you notice, here is our ranking order, eleven and twelve. These are the two right now lowest amounts of the year. So we will hopefully recapture through the end of the year.
I guess just from looking at the trend, this is the third year in a row where we're flat in in sales tax collection, which means businesses of the business in our city is flat despite inflation and other activity, you know, more stores coming online.
Not totally flat. We're going up a little bit, but not it's it's
Yeah, so from last year, we were at seven, eight, four, nine, six, four. This year, seven, eight, four, three, nine, five. Two years ago, we were we're up ten thousand dollars from two years ago.
You look at the bottom, though, you know, twenty one, we're five, five point one, five foot five, five point five, five point six. It it's it's, you know, we're going up a little, but but not a lot.
Yeah, it is slightly fine. And I do take those words of caution very seriously because we are in a much luckier position than some of our neighbors who are actually seeing about a twenty percent deficit. But yeah, we
I just take that out loud is that despite inflation and everything else going on, our businesses are basically flat. They're within two percent of where they were two years ago from the standpoint of total revenue, because this is based on revenues. Just something to put in the back of our heads when we're thinking about what's the health of our city. It's not going up five percent a year.
Correct.
And it's Or six percent a year, which you would think when we're adding adding residents, adding activity.
Right. And and that's a good point to do as we go forward into our mid biennial budgeting as well. But yeah, that is something we monitor and I do receive a lot of reports from economists. Mr. Councilmember Stern forwards me to those a lot of times. I've also probably participated in about three economic updates this month. So I we try to stand up a bit. Yeah, you're absolutely right. There's there's a change in the environment. Consumer spending is a huge process of that, and we're starting to see that decline a little. We just met with our investment advisor. So those words of caution and and really, we're in the position financially we are because we do move forward conservatively. So that that's very good to keep in mind. So looking at a year to date, and again, this is only for about two months of the year, you can see the primary decrease is in construction. And that really goes forward to, you know, development. We've seen a little bit decline in development, but also keeping in mind that's for activity in January and February, where there's really not a lot of building going on. And so as we move forward, actually, we will probably be with our when we start developing our recreation center as well as some other developments coming on our parks that get developed, we actually fund our own sales tax in those items. So everything else, and I think what's very retail trade you're seeing is slightly down. And so looking at that, and so we look at the categories of those. But the good news is this means construction is the largest hit. But the reality is those are pretty diversified. And so it becomes very nice that we're not so dependent on one industry. Here's just a trend of of the graphs. And so you can see the dark two, two dark blue are twenty five. And so we, you know, we're we're fairly consistent with the prior years. And then, as you can see, is for most of the months coming forward, we'll we'll generate a little heart have hopefully reach up those. But a very good point of Councilmember Newels, we'll continue to monitor those as they grow and hopefully hopefully our months will continue to grow as as the past trend. But obviously, want to keep an eye on that. And then just a picture of, you know, where where are most of our sales tax generated? So as you can see in twenty four versus twenty five, our retail trade's taking a little bit bigger piece of the pie. And I think that's because construction was a larger piece of the pie in twenty four. And then as we get down, and then we take that retail trade and we break it down into the categories. And so you can see very well diversified amongst all of those categories. And so and that is it for our sales tax report. And so now we can look at our real estate excise tax report. And just so you know, as we never get into the business detail because we sign secrecy agreements with the state of Washington, although city of Polesville records are public, private industry is proprietary, and we will not discuss any of those items. Every council member you have signed the secrecy agreement, so you do have the ability to come and talk to me about specifics if you'd like to. Now, looking at our real estate excise tax, and to see if I can make this bigger. Let's see, can I do this? No, that's a fine. Oh, here we go. So this is this is a really hard one to track because it's very transactional. And so we are very conservative in our budget estimating for it. It is a restricted revenue, and we specify the uses for it when we develop our city improvement plan. And so the good news is is we're very conservative in our estimate. And we've programmed it out for about five or six years because this is the intended funding piece for some of our future debt that we're going forward for with our possible event and recreation center as well as the Knoll Road, which we intend to go for debt and 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 then it also is funding a payment for the city hall. So those we've taken into account and trend this out for several years going forward. So looking at the two months, you can see that our real estate excise tax is down from the prior years quite a bit. But again, transactional, but again, we're very conservative in our budgeting. We're at about twenty two percent of the budget, should be about twenty five percent. But last year, we we kept our budget flat. And last year, we exceeded our budget, you know, the hundred and sixty eight percent. And so, you know, we'll continue to track it. Also, when the county puts out the reports, I can start tracking it to home sales. I have just personally driving around, I've seen the homes are on the market a little bit longer, but they are. But we are still receiving a substantial amount of because in the utility billing, we get the request for the closing and escrow. So we're still seeing a pretty heavy traffic load with that. And I don't think it's due to refinancing as the rates aren't 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 great for that. So it is, there is still market moving. It's just I noticed it's just slowing down. Yes.
As we informally chatted remotely this morning, with mortgage rates already four or five days ago, and then another big hit in the treasury markets this morning, and the deficit is a real problem. Might you adjust your forecasts at all based on previous interest rate spike experience?
For the real estate excise tax, I think we'll monitor it, but the fact that we've completely exceeded our budget last year, about two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty, I still think we're in the same market. And as we've planned out some of these going future, we have not went to debt yet. And so that 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 is what's worrisome for me is looking at our future debt issue for some of these capital projects because we are already underway and we pushed out our debt issue for the Nordic cottages to to get it all in one picture. So that's that's where I continue. That's what makes me nervous is what what are our debt options? The reality is, is when we get there, we have a very good financial advisor, but maybe you go out for a short term with a callable nature and refinance when it's when it's a lower interest rate. So we'll definitely have some strategy to handle that. That's what makes me the most nervous.
I agree. There's been some in the past sixty days, the municipal bond market has diverged from the rest of it. The interest rates really have come up because of a variety of concerns. And so you're, yeah, I we need to be flexible. Appreciate you the way you're thinking about it. I I think it's the right way. Might have to go shorter term just to get weather the storm.
Right. So so, yeah, I agree. I appreciate having all of the heads at the table because I I'm not smart enough to make all those decisions. And I don't have to vote on them monthly. So and here is just a trend of the graphs showing, you know, every year you can just see you can just see the flexibility and you know how it becomes very transactional based. But I still feel comfortable with where we're at, just knowing that that revenue for several years has exceeded our budget. I mean, going back to before nineteen and twenty and even looking at twenty when it took, I mean, we definitely lowered our projections. But as you can see, our revenue, our revenue projections are still pretty pretty under whip, I hope to collect. So I'm feeling comfortable with that, but we definitely will continue to keep an eye on it.
Yep.
So that so that is the real estate excise tax. And now what I thought we'd do is we go over the financial status report. This is January through March. And so we've been able to get that up to date. And I know that we revamped it a little bit last year to make it hopefully a little bit shorter and more more friendly, reader friendly. So looking at the activity that goes January through March, and I will say is, and I'll make it bigger. Let me just send that plus sign for us. Yes. There you go. So what we really do is we focus a lot on the general fund because that is that is the that is the area that is our operating budget that pays for you know, probably seventy five percent of our city services. So we tend to focus on that quite a bit more. So the first thing, looking at our revenues through March, and we just do an estimate on the sales tax to give a better picture of where we're at because I remember we have that thirteenth month that we're collecting all of, we have to wait until the end of February to book all of those revenues for actuals. So we we do an estimate on the prior year, not all of the revenues, but primarily sales tax. That's that is one of our largest funding sources in the general fund. As we get through March, we should be at about twenty five percent of the budget. And when things fall out of that variation, we then we look into it and dive a little bit deeper. And so there's two of us that look at this pretty closely and dive into some of those items. So as you can see, the taxes are really only about fourteen percent. So they're out of that variance a little bit. But the reason why is, and I feel comfortable with that, is our real is our property taxes. The big collection comes in May because everybody pays their property taxes in April. So by June, we should hopefully see those even out and be right within the ballpark. And it also too is if you look at the And it also too is if you look at the U T, um, the electric utility tax, they pay quarterly. So we're not going to receive that first quarter until April. So several of these utilities do pay quarterly, as well as the gas tax. So when we look at this in June, it's a lot better picture, and we have April's report ready. I just have to review it and get in your boxes, so we'll, we'll see that now monthly. We just have to get through February because January, February reports really are, are not, not, are pretty worthless just because we're doing so many year-end transactions.
Deb, while you're on this slide, can you, can you just comment on the B and O tax in terms of budget and the amount, uh, that's coming so far?
Yeah, and I have a, I have a presentation at the, um, end, which is, um, which will be good, and because we'll talk about the number of files and revenues, but I save that towards the end. Um, the B and O tax, so we collect is at a minimum every quarter, and then we collect, um, some, many of the filers are annual filers. And we based it on if you have a hundred thousand dollars of gross taxable sales, go ahead and report it annually, and then if you're under that quarterly. So we, um, being the first year, um, a lot of our, our monies that we received all in January and February applied to two thousand and twenty four. However, since it's our first year, we were estimating, and so now some of the revenues coming in, you're going to see some pretty good numbers coming forward in March and April. Because we couldn't, we couldn't capture all of those that we had to send back, so there's a little, going to be a little bit of a timing difference of first year, and then we'll get better at it as we go. Um, so last year, we projected four hundred thousand dollars of revenue based on six months, and we exceeded that and brought in about half a million. And that is, that doesn't include some of the items that we just received this month. Um, so right now, what you're seeing is you are seeing some leftover dollars from twenty four that were receded into twenty five. There might be a few of the dollars that apply to twenty five, and so in April, we'll see the first quarterly returns. And we, we've, um, just, you know, not to take away the big excitement when they do a B and O. But, um, looking at the dollars we've collected in April and May, because April thirtieth would have been the amount due for the first quarter. We budgeted a million dollars in two thousand and twenty five, and looking at the figures that are coming in, I feel comfortable that we'll meet it and probably exceed it. I feel that million dollars is pretty conservative. So that is a good news because, remember, those dollars were brought in to fund our city administrator as well as spend of some of those, um, police officers that we funded from our savings, and then growing into the revenues that we, that we budgeted. Because reminding you, in twenty four was the last year that we were able to use, um, our ARPA dollars, our federal tax dollars, so those went away in twenty five. Yes.
On the revenue side, uh, is there anything that concerns you? I, I understand there's a variation and, you know, the ups and flows of, that you've explained, but is there any one of these that concerns you that were down or up in a different way?
Um, not yet. I'll continue to monitor the utility taxes. Um, we'll, we'll see how those are, but, um. Unfortunately, for homeowners, we're, we're paying higher utilities, so I think that will reflect in our utility, agility tax rates.
The one that I find curious is if you go down to, um, uh, where are we? Don't, don't move it, don't move it. Crap, it is, um, building, structure and equipment, and we're budgeted at five twenty, and we've already brought in, what, forty percent of it? Two hundred, two hundred and three, and yet our sales tax revenue for construction is down. That's permitting revenue.
Correct, but remember, this, this, yeah, the sales, the, um, sales tax revenue is just based, looking at this year comparative to last year. So in January and February, we were pretty active in construction, whereas it slowed down. The building and permit, um, revenue, what's good is when they're bringing that in, it means that we're doing future.
Yeah, that's the future.
And, and remember, we brought those projections up for twenty five because we felt that we were too conservative in our estimates. So we looked at a five-year average of what we've been collecting for those fees, so we'll continue to monitor that because those are very transactional. I'm also remembering, um, many times when we collected this permitting and all of the development revenue, it's for projects that we might be doing the work for, for a year or two years. Um, the, is, is building, um, what really helped us when we went through the last recession is we had a lot of, um, developers with go through the planning and permitting process, but then they couldn't get loans, they couldn't develop, and had the money when the, um, when we went through the recession. The good news is when they've got developments going, as soon as they are able to obtain that funding, come out of the recession, they're ready to go and start building that. That really is apparent in, um, some of our activity going on after twenty and twenty one.
With B and O, last year's B and O, I know you had mentioned to me at one point, there was one of the big retailers you were still working on. Did you, were you able to finally resolve that?
Gretchen is a dog with a bone, and she finally found, um, somebody, yes, and so a couple of those, um, collections we have, we have gathered now. So we're, we're continuing, um, you know, we're continuing to try and stay on it, and what's, um, and as we talk about the B and O, what's, uh, uh, really a bonus of this as well is we compare it to people who have business licenses in Paul'sville, and many people didn't realize they needed a license in Paul'sville. So that will help, that will help that enforcement and the, that revenue stream as well. So yes, yeah, she is, she is all over it. And we still are getting questions every day and phone calls, and she's, she talks to them on the phone and walks them through computers, so that, that's going well. Um, looking at grants, those are, you know, that, a lot of these grants, and we're going to have, um, several, because we haven't posted our carryover amendment, which we'll talk about is. We'll have a lot of the HHH grants come in here, but they'll have the expenditures to differentiate between them. Um, charges for services, so you can see we're at thirty five percent, so that's good news. Again, we're looking at our engineering, this is all development revenues right here, plan checking, we're about fifty percent of what we button the budget. Remember, that's a five-year average, so there's some pretty good, um, items going on in the planning, and they're busy.
Serious, serious construction headed our way.
Yeah.
With, with these kind of numbers.
And then, um, program fees, I think the best, you know, the rec, parks and recreation have some very big programs going on in January. Their basketball program starts and those revenues come in there, so, um, so you'll see that and, and those grow. Um, infractions, we're starting to see, um, look at our camera revenue.
I was gonna say.
No.
Yeah.
And that's only two.
Yeah.
Or one and a half.
Yeah, correct.
Well, and this is, you know, the.
That's only, uh, Viking plus a month or so up on Noel Road.
Correct.
They're, they're really cranking it out.
Are we paying for bond in three oh five yet?
I don't think so. It, it hasn't gotten turned on yet.
Okay.
We.
I didn't know if the contract started on yet, so we essentially were paying but not collecting.
We, well, we, um, they, they pay as they install it, so there's, so last year we did pay for the one camera, and it's an ongoing lease. And so as they get all three in there, and we do have the budget set aside for that contractual obligation.
For detention and corrections, what does that consist of?
That is primarily your cost for the jail services, and so when we look at comparing last year, you'll see that a lot of our budget savings is those costs were down. So we lowered our budget this year to reflect closer to what we anticipated it being collected.
Go ahead.
Mayor, when might we understand any impact on our municipal court caseload associated with?
Oh, the, you mean, the, we're seeing it right now, okay? There's, um, I mean, well, you could tell by the revenue streams. You can, you can tell by the revenue streams that, you know, we've had a lot of ticket activity, and, um. So far, my conversations with the court staff, they're, they're doing okay, they're handling it, but, um, there's been a lot of ticket revenue. Now, we knew there would be a lot initially. It's supposed to go up like this, and then it's supposed to go down, and then it'll level off somewhere. So, um, the one at Noel by the, by Paul'sville Elementary is really hasn't only been on just a couple weeks. It's, it's brand new. Um, we're not seeing that much of a decline on the one in, I don't know if the county's gone. We're not seeing that much of a decline on the one on Viking though. I think we have a lot of people from outside of our city going through our city, and so the idea that, that, you know, the city residents, boy, they know now. But if you're just here for the day from Quill scene or something, you, you don't know, so.
Just going on to the second line, the traffic infraction penalty, I assume that's the non automated standard police stops.
They've been doing a lot of, a lot of.
And I guess, just comment, it appears that we've had a, a change in the ability to enforce is driving this? Not the fact that there's more recklessness, it's just we have the ability to have the interactions with the public to encourage them to do better.
We're fully staffed, okay?
And so that, that's what we're seeing there is that we've got a full year's collection in the first three months because we were able to, we're fully staffed.
And to clarify it too, is, um, this budget has been greatly reduced over the years, probably about fifteen years ago, the budget and revenues were upper closer to seventy thousand.
Yeah, I just, it was more just, that's where I was. That's what I assumed. I just was looking for that for feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, so, and I, I guess my only point is maybe we are a little too conservative on that, but we're going into it. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, if, if we have to start enforcing pulling boats out of the bay, I know that some of the fines for that were fairly hefty, where would they go? Which one do they fall against?
We, um, probably under, um, boating safety fines, but again, I will use my state accounting manual to verify that as well.
I just didn't know that counted as a, as a non, yeah, there's, there's several in there that it potentially could be because it's still a, a type of parking infraction.
And, and then just also answering, helping, um, the mayor answer the question about the co, the court staffing. We did, we did increase a staff person this year to help with that because we anticipated the increase for those, um, ticket fines. And I believe that they've, um, have passed on some of their passport services to the clerk's department. So we're trying to give them as much resources as we can so they can address that. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Stern, did you have a question?
I was just going to remark on Councilman Eckert, uh, the reality is there won't be income from boats. There'll be tremendous burden of the cost of disposal, which will far exceed our ability to handle that alone. The county's shortchanged and the state cut everything back, so it's really holding our breath.
Yeah, there is, there is a substantial cost, and luckily, the last time we removed a boat, we were able to be reimbursed through a grant to the state, but there's no guarantees going.
Yeah, I just wondered if we, as we start enforcement out in the bay, kind of which line to look at to see if it, you know, if it's, if it's reflected.
I would believe it's under boating safety fines, but I'll double check that for you. Um, and then going down to investment interest, we did bump up the, um, the projections this year, kind of with the market. The good news for this is, as we're seeing the interest rates come down, um, we just met with our investment advisor. We have a very, um, long portfolio, and so we have locked in several of our interest rates at about four, average of four to four and a half percent for future earnings. So the good news is we'll be carried through some of that, and then eventually we'll see that decline as we start reinvesting. But right now, we're a little bit in that, in that.
These are not treasury rates, these are really the agencies, right? Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Jenny Mae.
Right, and, and our advisor, it's split among both of them. We, we, um, we invest very conservatively, primarily only in treasuries and agencies. And so they, the, our advisor, um, helps us determine which is the best way to go, but just what we're securing. I'm starting to see the interest rates a little bit lower as we're, and we have, we have things maturing almost every month. And, um, and so we're securing in those rates, and usually it's out for, if we get good ones out for a year or two years, at least locking those in. So that is the general fund revenue, and then just looking at it, obviously, year-to-date budget, we're only twenty five percent in. So we're, that chart will hopefully start evening out as we go forward. Then looking at our expenditures, um, nothing, nothing really to highlight. Um, some of the things that look, you know, like there's a, we've broken it out by department, um, trying to bring those up, and then looking at, um, some of those items within the department. So for instance, you'll look at the finance department, and here's our annual budget amount expended, and, um, you know, the amount of our budget we've spent. And then down below it are all these contractual obligations. So some of the times that we'll send it off is, is we pay our insurance premium at the beginning of the year, a substantial amount of money. So that, yes, goes out of whack.
This is not the variance report, right? Because that's color coded.
It is, it replaced the variance report because what I had heard the last time is, um, that's why we have the percentages on here. And we, we total them up is because it was becoming a little bit redundant, and so we tried to, we tried to make it more departmental. And, um, we're open for suggestions, but we're trying to respond to what's usable for you. And we definitely highlight any of those items that are that variance.
Deb, will you remind us, um, in terms of the court staff? My recollection is we added one additional court administrative staff member to help cover with the increase in traffic ticket volume and so forth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So again, looking at some of our contractual obligations, and then, um, just moving, so I, so as you can see, um, nothing really out of, out of, that would highlight, you know, looking into it deeper. Um, what is funny is I went over this with the mayor and our city administrator, and I love the fresh eyes because the city administrator, administrator, if you look at our emergency management said, why are we at about fifty percent of the budget? Well, because one of them is a contract with, um, KITC up nine one one, and one of them is for our own disaster preparedness person. So both of those are exactly in line with the budget. I will say is the, um, is the emergency manager, which is not a lot of the money of our budget. But we had been playing close to about thirty thousand dollars a year, and they've reduced their annual fee to about fifteen thousand, so. I think they're putting back some of the money they're, they're collecting in sales tax to us.
Yeah, one more, um, with, um, uh, at least one of our officers out on the critical incident leave currently. And, uh, an, another out, um, eh, are, are we, are we all right in terms of staffing for the police department currently? Do we need to be anticipating that we're going to need some additional funds to help kind of fill that in for a little while?
I, we're, they've been running short for so long, we finally got fully staffed, and now we got somebody out because of a critical, critical innocent incident. You know, it's almost like, um.
It's, it's, you're staffed for probably about two weeks. But, but where you will see it in, in, um, we'll probably maybe need to visit, um, sooner is, we'll look at the impact of overtime because a lot of officers will have to work some overtime to accommodate that, and so we'll work with the chief. And, um, he has Kelly in his office who monitors their budgets, um, pretty closely. So last year at the end, we, we came out fine, but we'll, we'll continue on, but that's, thank you for pointing that out because it may be a future need.
We need to anticipate anything there, so, all right, thank you.
But you're absolutely right, there could be a future need for that. So this is all of general fund, and so if we go down to the bottom of, of general fund, um, we, you know, you can look at all the percentages of each one of those programs. Uh, we're about twenty five, twenty six percent of the budget, right where we should be, um, and even with taking into account that large insurance premium we pay at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I guess just back into that, restate what you just said, um, because we front load insurance, the size of that. Notionally, we should be at twenty five percent. This shows us at twenty seven. If we normalized insurance, we'd probably be a bit around on twenty three or twenty four percent.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We're a little bit under the glide slope for expenditures.
Yeah, because we have a lot of.
On an annualized basis.
We have a lot of contractual, um, items that hit in the January. Absolutely. So you can see we're, um, nineteen million dollar budget, and we're a little bit over five million year-to-date. Um, looking at where our budgets are expended, so, um, this is the budget. And so you can see most in general fund is, you know, almost sixty percent are wages and benefits. We are servicing agency, and that's where we expend our funds. Um, and then looking at the actuals, um, they fall, you know, pretty close to the categories. Right now, the wages look slightly different. Slightly less than what we budgeted, but we're right there. And then when you look at this revenues to expenditures, you're going to say, oh, my gosh, you have way more expenditures and revenues. That's expected because of our property tax that will come into May again, and that should, um, stabilize in March or in June.
So, so a month or so ago, we authorized entering into a purchase and sales agreement for some land.
Yes, and we are, um, in our carryover amendment, we're, we're allocating those funds to do that, hopefully. And we'll come forward with a budget amendment, uh, or actually, it'll be included in the.
So in our budget, we had, I'm going to get the number wrong, two hundred and fifty thousand this year for parks that we added for, um, purchases.
Yeah, we were transferring two hundred for future property acquisitions every year.
Right, okay, and so from that standpoint, um, we're going to see expenditures come up. Well, it's a transfer over to the cap, okay.
Right, so you'll see it transferred.
We're going to over expend on this bud, year's budget, but we have the resources to do it.
Correct.
Got it, thanks.
So then looking at all of the funds, and we used to have all of these descriptions, it just kind of went on and on and said the same thing of we're over budget because these are capital projects. So the good news in this is we just highlighted these areas that fall out of that variance. Um, but we didn't put a descriptor by them because there is nothing that's surprising because primarily anything that's over or under is, is related to capital projects or, um, you know, our mitigation funds. So nothing surprising there. Um, all of our operating funds are right within that variance, so that's the good news. And then looking at our cash balances, where we measure if we have two months of operating cash, um, you can see the, the only ones that are highlighted are the areas that, um, should be. Traffic Development Fund, we, we're pretty cons, um, served, we, we plan to spend much of our money on Knoll Road, Third Avenue this year. And so we're not going to maintain those two months of cash in that fund, but we do not transfer the actual cash until we progress in those projects as far as we need to. And then, of course, we don't keep money in our debt service funds, and the neighborhood streets, there's a capital portion of it that, um, some of the neighborhood streets are capital and son are operating. So you'll see one ten is your operating, and you have a pretty substantial cash balance. And then in your three ten, it will only be transferring over there what is related to capital items. And our facilities fund is, um, where we are funding the plausible event and recreation center as well as, um, uh, let's see, our cottages, our Nordic cottages. So that is the variance, and then I will say is this chart, um, is slightly different than what you had in your packet, but this is what is. So that is the variance. And then I will say is this chart is slightly different than what you had in your packet, but this is what is up online. We noticed that there was a mistake on that last graph that, that had last year's numbers in it. So Larissa Campbell in our office updated that, and that's what's on the screen. Yes.
The facilities department, am I to understand the capital projects, water utility fund is, is that where that would be identified? Or am I missing some? I'm trying to keep up.
Yeah, no, that's okay. That's a good question. So the facility spun that three-thirty-one, that is where we're recording only governmental projects. And so those are the capital projects. And again, what we have in there is we has planned to do our Paul'sable Event and Recreation Center. It's where we're also paying for the construction of the Nordic cottages. In our storm, in our utilities funds, in order to make this a little bit more representative, is we said, these are our operating expenditures, and the utility funds will pay for each one of their capital projects. So if it's a sewer project, that fund will cover that, that project.
Deb, I know we mentioned earlier, the mayor mentioned how quickly the Nordic cottages project is moving along. Do we have a sense at this point of how we're doing with that budget? Is it looking, looking good? Is it, can you give us any little hint there what, what that's looking like?
I believe the project budget is falling exactly where they fall because we do have a contract with the contractor, and I don't believe I've seen many change orders come through. My biggest thing that I'm watching is because we had planned to go out for debt for it right now. And so I'm trying to fund it internally, and then we will pay ourselves back with those funds. I may be coming forward with an internal loan fund just to cover those proceeds, knowing we're gonna pay ourselves back. So my biggest concern is watching the cash flow since we didn't go for debt. But as far as the project's progressing, I believe it's right under contract.
Glad you're not seeing too many change orders. Thank you.
I like that, Rick, that line of thought, especially because our, we continue to miss on the good side from our budgeting, so our reserves are growing. And so doing an interfund loan to buy us some time for the interest rates to stabilize. I don't know if they'll normalize, but stabilize.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, feels, feels right.
Deb, is the money that this, that was secured in the state budget for the Nordic cottages, how does that help us then, as far as that goes to?
That absolutely helps us, and I believe they just received another four hundred thousand dollar grant. Because right now, I was just looking at the cash flow, and we have a lot of our money in the Fund Three Thirty-One turned up in our core of investments. So we're gonna have to move it out of our core, but those, those grant funds, we pay off things first with, so that helps our cash flow with that as well. Very good questions. So that's now looking at our, just, we, we reduced this quite a bit. We didn't list how many, how many of each one of these investments have, but we have substantial amount. We have investments maturing almost every month over the next two, three years. We have almost, almost up to a three-year lengthened portfolio. And we have an investment policy which we'll be waiting for to counsel the update, but not many things change. But security, liquidity, and are some of our primary concerns when we do this. So as you can see, our entire investment balance right now is, is substantial. When we started with our investment advisor many years ago, I think we had a portfolio of about seventeen million dollars.
We had, it was under twenty.
Yeah, so it's, so it's significant. And even our state pool, we used to cut about five or six million dollars in there, and now we're up to twelve million. And that is liquid, and we can, we can call that back within twenty-four hours or less. And our cash, in our cash bank, I get concerned about because we actually have too much, so we're moving that back and forth between the state pool as well.
I wish the kids from the pollinators were still here to see this, and the importance, the importance of investment.
Oh, yes, I know. I'm teaching my twenty-one-year-old son that as well, is like, put some money in savings. You'll appreciate it when you're my age, right? So that, so that's the good news. And we're, and as you can see, we're still a little bit heavy in the treasury and the agency. And, and that's, that's why we use the experts. I'm not an investment expert. I, I use their talent, and they have a whole pool that comes back to us. And then looking at our investment balance, so as you can see, for all funds, as, as Councilmember Noel pointed out, is our cash has been growing. And, and so we do have a substantial amount. And so as you can see, we're slightly over where we are the prior year. And you'll also see forward as we come forward in our recommendations for carryover. I think that will allow us some ability to maybe postpone or reduce our debt and put some money aside for future projects. I think it will help some of our long-range planning. All council decisions, but those are some of our suggestions that we'll come forward with.
We have some fairly significant, good planning going on with capital investments required to support our city that go out through the six-year plan and the twenty-year. This, to me, shows the opportunity, depending on the ability to execute because of staffing internally, that, you know, we could selectively pull forward stuff.
Absolutely.
We have the cash.
Right.
Yeah, and not, because really, when we go up for debt, we're encumbering the city for twenty years. So, you know, so, so it allows that future, right? Yeah, absolutely. So that, so that is for all funds. So we're slightly above where we are last year, but we still have a, we still have a very good investment balance. We try to keep most of our liquid cash invested and earn the most earnings for it. And then just looking at general fund, you can also see, we started the first of the year right, right where we were last year, and we've grown it a little bit, which is good because we had been maintaining general fund with several of our ARPA and treasury dollars. So the, the news is now with these new revenue streams, we're growing into support that and not becoming dependent on some of those grants. So, and you can see what year was this, twenty-one and twenty, that's when we were taking some pretty big hits. And then the treasury dollars came in and like, whoa, so.
That, that's a pandemic graph. I mean, you can see the wackiness that is going on.
And so this is just a project page that shows all of the projects going on. So anything in pink is really what we're underway with, either planning or design. The items in gray, we haven't started yet, will be coming out in the future. And, and so progressing along those projects. And then anything that's in there, you won't see many, but if they were in blue, they would have been completed. And so we will see some when we carry over, such as our park, Rob Park is getting close to completion, as well as our Rotary Manor Park. So hopefully, you'll see towards the end of the year, some of those come out in blue because it's nice to show that accomplishment. But it, what it does shows, we're very busy. Our engineering, our planning, our public works department are very busy.
Yeah, before we get too far past, can we, can you back to those slides real quick? And this is, this is like a high-level question that is between the two of you. Because you were talking about, you know, how our sales tax is kind of staying flat, which is like, but I'm thinking, looking at this too. We're talking about flat over years in which a lot of other things were significantly negative. And yet we maintained flat. So in the grand scheme of things, is that not a positive? Like, I just kind of.
Rick, is that while sales tax, which was a big driver, is staying flat, other revenue streams have been increasing. And so we're, we're shifting our dependency of, of a little incrementally off of sales tax.
We're, we're lucky enough that we have other revenue streams that we're not totally dependent on sales tax. We're, we're diversifying our risk with other revenue streams. That was one of the biggest important reasons we did the B and O. And is that with other revenue streams, the city, we can diversify our risk a little better with multiple streams.
So, so is it, could we say, is it an indicator of then of some of the resiliency of our, our business community of our city then? In that even when we have, like last year, we, you know, we had interests or not interests, but inflation, you know, at one point was up to almost ten percent. And yet our sales revenue maintained. You know, like, things were, times where other things are, you know, during COVID, when you expect to see drops, we maintained. So, yeah, we haven't grown, like our population growth may make us think, but we've stayed steady. So is that a, is that just a resiliency sign?
Or is it? The city is good. I'm, I'm kind of concerned with the individual business owners. Seeing their revenue stay flat year-on-year with their expenses coming up. And how are they doing as individual units? And being sensitive to that, especially as we, well, pick on the B and O tax. The B and O tax potentially is gonna collect twenty percent the amount of our sales tax. It's, it's measurable. And so just being sensitive to the health of our businesses is kind of where I was going at, Rick. I think that the city's financial health is remarkably strong compared to our peers.
Compared to anybody else in the county.
So you're thinking more of, we don't want to take actions that hurt those businesses through.
I think, I think we just, we need to be, be looking at the environment outside of our council chambers. And, and understanding how they're doing, because they are us at the end of the day.
Right, okay. Because I, and I did have a concern, and I brought it up to Deb, and I actually had brought it up to Rep. Nance a little while back with the state raising its B and O, what that meant for us at the local level and what we might have to do to compensate, to not hurt our businesses with our B and O, like if that was a factor, and we didn't know at the time, so.
That gets us into macroeconomics, you know, how much ends up in government investment for various tax collection versus how much is in the private side. And, and so you can't use the same dollar twice if it shows up in the state or it shows up in the city's budget, it's not being used by that individual someplace else. And just, we just need to be sensitive. It might be the right thing to do. We just need to be, all I'm saying is, I'm trying to process is awareness.
Yeah, I was, where, where it was headed. I just wanted, because to me, it seemed like we weathered a good storm, but you've brought it up several times, so I want to make sure.
And, and I, and I agree, and I think it's just the awareness and being able to adjust. And the diversification is helpful, but when we first went into COVID in twenty, everybody was anticipating a twenty-five percent to a forty percent decrease in sales tax. And what happened is everybody shopped at home, and our sales tax boom. And so you just have to be, I just think you have to be monitoring it and be amenable to an adjustment if, if need be. Right, and that was, that was a huge boom. So we actually saw twenty-five percent growth, right?
The city of Kent hated it, okay? If you were a warehouse.
And Pecola, which is why they came out with the streamlined sales tax, right? So, and we were projected to be a loser when they did that, and we ended up being a winner. So, you know, so you don't know.
It's very healthy right now. It's, we're doing really well. But, you know, we have to be cognizant of, you know, what we see coming. And so we, we, we look at it very carefully, and we're very deliberative in our decision-making.
This is just a guess from you, but I think part of what keeps it steady is that so many people are moving into Paul's Bo. And we have a diverse, like, you know, Navy, working class, and then even tech people moving here and contributing.
Yeah, and, and what we really look at, I like to look at with economists is consumer confidence because that will affect, the last presentation I went to is people are now starting to build up savings a little bit more because they're, they're nervous, you know, about what's coming. And so that's what you kind of, you want to adjust, and that's why we monitor it closely, and that's why we also diversify. And so, 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 you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll weather through it. But is again, we've been very conservative in our projections for the most part, and that's why we're seeing a very healthy general fund balance, which now gives us options to move forward with some of those capital projects and not, not impact some of the others. Yes.
Were we projecting at the end of this year, a general fund of four-point-something million?
Yeah, and so we'll get into the carryover, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it was a little over. We, yeah, as we get into the carryover, which is next, is you're gonna see is, we expected to use almost two million in, in reserves, and we actually made more money than we, than we, than we said, so, yeah. You are absolutely correct. So, okay, so those are, this is our quarterly variance report, so nothing too alarming, and, and we'll continue to monitor that. It's, it's good news. So that's, that's where, and so now moving on to our carryover. So this is what we call carryover, but really is, is your beginning balance for twenty-five, your ending balance for twenty-four. Is it some, in putting it in simpler terms, we call it carryover because we carry over and project the beginning balance. So let's see. So if we look at, and again, this is where we see, this is our budget to actual, we planned. And so if you can see, we planned on using about two, almost three-point million dollars of our reserves in order to get through twenty-four. And, and our actual figures, we actually brought in about one-point-two million dollars, which means ultimately, you know, the difference is we were bringing up our fund balance about three and a half million dollars, which is crazy, right? And so, and I know there's, all our surrounding agencies are very jealous of us because I'm talking to a lot of our neighbors right now. Yes. Guys, I'm not a betting person. I don't take my, I don't take our city funds and go black.
We as city government are not supposed to be making money, okay? That's not what, that's not the right answer, all right? So, you know, it's good, but, but that's not what we should be doing.
The best, the best, the best city budget is you budget and you have zero variance because you projected and expended exactly as you, as you planned. The good news is, is we bring in our taxes and we tend to expend it for ongoing operations. And I think this now will allow us the ability to put some in savings for some of our future capital development.
And what's really, I mean, so that, in the end, we're gonna end up, this isn't like, you know, excess funds. We have to go out to debt. Previously, we're going out to debt because rates were low. And then we were saving money when rates were low. Now we have money, now rates are high. And now as people have thought of, like, you know, we spend that money down instead of borrowing as much because rates are so high.
Right.
And it ends up saving us money. It saves taxpayers' money that we have a nest egg to spend down instead of going out to debt.
Absolutely. And what also is helpful too, yeah, and what's also helpful is, if you remember, when we went out for city hall, we actually went into an economic decline right away, so we were able to use our savings to make those future debt payments that the revenues weren't supporting at that time. So, so, yeah, so, so, yeah, it's scary, it's a good place. But when we talked about going up for debt, we laid it all out, knowing that that was a possibility, you know. So, you know, hopefully, you plan, plan the best and to cover you through those tough times, because everything is cyclical. What goes up must come down. So looking at where some of our anomalies are, so our taxes, you know, in general, in general figures, we're up about seven-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Of that sales tax was about a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand over budget. Utility taxes, the big one, three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars, and I think we all are experiencing that in our utility rates. Pay, paying those and collecting those taxes, and as, as all of our rates increase, it brings in more taxes. B and O taxes, as I said, we projected four-hundred thousand, and we brought in about a little over half a million dollars. So over that projection, development fees, we tend to be very conservative on our projections because sometimes we, we, we anticipate items going in. But these are usually one-time fees, so you don't want to bank on those and use those for ongoing expenses. So overall, all the development fees were about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars over budget. A big, a big hit to the general fund in a positive way was we had to fund the roundabout and the tunnel on Knoll Road with general fund dollars because the city does not own those assets. And we had, we had grants out, and what the grant said is we want to, I guess they call it peanut butter it out through the grant, right? And so we had to wait until those projects were almost completely done to catch that last bit of revenue to support those projects. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we had a half a million dollars of grant funds, truly one-time dollars to fund the project for Knoll Road that we did. And then again, we had some, the last time, last of our dollars for the ARPA funds that we are used with about a hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars. And as you've seen, Park and Rec is becoming very proactive. Their revenues were up. We, we keep, Jeff is doing a very good job on trying to project those revenues, but he's pushing out programs, and so their revenues were a little bit higher. Obviously, their expenses were a little bit higher, but I think their revenues are, are working harder to support some of their operations. Fines and forfeitures, we started to see the first of those traffic cameras, so we saw those revenues come up. Investment earnings, huge one. We did bump up those revenue projections, and as I said, I think we'll carry it through the next few years, but that was a big bump. Last year, it's, and the big thing, it's, it's really not a, a cash transaction, is you have to book at the end of the year your unrealized investment earnings. And depending upon when you purchased that portfolio last year, I think we actually realized, in twenty-three, an unrealized investment loss. But you never recognize it because we just hold it to the end of the term investment. So this year, they were up about five-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand. And then we also received opioid funds, one-time dollars. We are going to receive dollars over the next, probably, they're all under different agreements and payment terms. So we received one big time bump in twenty-four of ninety thousand. Every year, we're gonna get in about seventy-five hundred now. Those are restricted funds strictly used for that purpose, so we restrict that fund balance specific to those requirements by the law. So those are some of our revenue variations. Now looking at our expenditures. So a lot of items that we save money in professional services, you'll see that in the requests we're carrying over and moving forward with those into two thousand and twenty-five. A lot of planning and engineering professional services specific to a project will be carried over. Our legal audit fees, we had a little bit of savings, so we didn't spend as much legal as we did, which is good because the year before, we had to increase the budget to accommodate those. Those are sometimes transactional, I have a feeling we might struggle with the legal budget this year, and we'll continue to monitor that as well. Kitsap nine-one-one, a little bit of savings. They did a mid-year adjustment and lowered everybody's rates just in time to give us a letter that they're gonna be going up thirty-six thousand dollars in twenty-five, which is very frustrating to me, and I know to the mayor as well, because we passed us, they passed a sales tax, and we're. And we're trying, and they are now going to make us purchase all our own hardware, as well as increasing.
Problem is, Kitsap nine-one-one right now has eight point two million dollars sitting in the bank. Okay, and I said, look, you've got a timing issue going on, they're building this big radio system. And they're, you know, the revenue flow is, is really substantial, I said, but, but. Don't raise our fees, use part of your reserve balance. Because you're gonna have more revenue coming in year after year in order to offset that, because the radio system is behind. So they've been saving money for the radio, okay, so they got this war chest. And I tried to convince the board and say, don't, don't raise our fees, just take some of the money that's sitting there, uh, because of the timing issue. And I, they, I lost it, the, 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 the board didn't agree with me, so they, they sent us thirty-six thousand dollar bill. So that the end of the month, end of the year, they gave them nine million dollars sitting there, I don't get it, but go ahead.
Without impugning anybody's motives whatsoever, isn't it part institutional problem there? Because the, many of the boards are elected. Officials sitting on the board, which is a little closer to many citizens. Though, the nine eleven board is any number of professionals sitting on the board, right?
They're all, they're, the, the board is elected leaders like myself. And um, um, but there's also the elected leaders from the fire districts.
Commissioners.
The commissioners that are on the, on the Kitsap nine-one-one board, and the chair of the board is, uh. Oh my God, what's his name, he's, he's, he's North Kitsap Fire Commissioner, uh, Dave.
I don't know.
I can't remember his last name, but um, no, there, it, there's more commissioners than there are city electants and county electants. So the fire commissioners really run that board. So.
So just, just pulled out my soapbox for a moment, but. Um, but our city administrator, um, Gelder wanted, he had heard that rumor, and so we reached out to see what the impact was. And they originally started with about a sixty thousand dollar increase, and after a little bit of pushback, um, very heavily by our mayor. Um, it did reduce to a thirty-five thousand dollar, but it does say in the agreement that we will be paying for any of our hardware. And updates to those, so just heads up when you, when you talk to some of your people about it. Um, and then a huge savings, which we talked about, was the jail costs, which is that security of persons and property and. Um, and detention and correction, so we've lowered that budget in twenty-five, and so we probably will not see that variance again. Um, that high in twenty and twenty-five going forward, hopefully. Emergency preparedness, you guys pass that at the end of the year, and so we, we didn't have the position filled for an entire year, so that's where the savings are for a partial vacancy, yes.
Is the camera, is that reflecting of the camera that we hadn't been able to install yet? The savings on that, the traffic camera?
Yes, so some of that's for the contractual. And then the indirect allocation, you remember, we adjust that to actual numbers at the end of the year, and so. As we hire more people in the city hall to support the utilities, we're gonna charge them more money. And so that's, that's partially why the, and we were pretty conservative when we built that in the beginning. Um, not to hit our utilities too hard, but we do an actual adjustment, it also is very dependent on um. A lot of the engineering department, if they're focusing on utility projects more for one year, we're gonna charge utilities more. If they're focusing more on road projects, it's gonna reduce the cost that we're passing on to them, it's a very involved formula. And so looking at the month-to-date, I spread it out, so you can still see the thirteenth month is a little, is a lot heavier. Because almost all of the expenditures really are done throughout the year and a timely basis, but in the thirteenth period, we're catching up a lot of revenues. We tried to stabilize it a little bit by estimating some of those sales tax revenues, but you, you still see, we'll see a lot of them. And as you can see in May and in November, the huge property tax months, that's where most of those dollars are coming in. And then in June, we're actually making debt payments, um, or December, we're making um, the principal payments, so you'll see those fluctuate a little. Um, some of the budget amendments that we've already approved in twenty-five, just reminding you that these did hit the general fund, so we purchased the two police cars or trucks. About a hundred sixty thousand, we did the council chambers hardware, the good news is we're using peg fees for those, but it is, it is hitting your general funds, so we'll increase the budget. Um, you agreed to the personnel software that they're implementing right now, as far as the application process and the hiring. And um, the police department, the handguns that they needed to replace, um, because of the new rules, and then park. Correct software, they, um, they were approved the new program request for their software, but they didn't move forward with it, so we're incorporating that into the carryover amendment. Um, the, this is some, I'm gonna, items, we have the Parker Rec tree candidate grant, which are working on. They do have revenue to support that, but we'll be including that in the amendment. Planning professional services, they had a couple grants that they're still finishing up on some of that, um, the GMA work and items they have going on in their department. The ADA update, um, the engineering department is still working on finalizing that plan, um, which helps us re- obtain some of our federal grants. Federal awards, the engineering complete streets, a little bit of money, but they're finishing up there, and it has, does have a grant to support that. And then continuing forward with the oyster plant park feasibility study, a little bit of money left there. And then HHH, it's, it's, it's a, um, there's several grants, there's timing issues. They're very hard to calculate, so I just finished just today with our, with our HHA's director, but the good news is, is um. The revenues will support those expenditures that we're rolling over. Then looking about, um, I, I met with the mayor and um, we put this out to departments to say, you know, this. What am I missing, and what do we need to think about going forward? So um, unfortunately, the risk insurance, um, it came up, the risk insurance came pretty close to what we budgeted, but as we have more services. In the general fund, general fund is receiving a little bit heavier hit for the risk insurance, so that increases the amount that the general fund pays for governmental portions of that. And it's based on, um, based on hours worked, um, as well as our inventory, all of our fixed assets that we are insuring. And so we, we do a multiple formula to figure out what share it is. The city hall utilities, when I looked at the budget, as we talked about it, is um, the budget we have allocated for utilities just did not cover it all last year, and so I think we need to bump that up. To support that, we also have, are having, as the building's growing, we're having to pull out, um, call in our contracted service for the HVAC repairs. In city hall, and last year we exceeded a little, so um, the suggestion was to bump that up a little, to cover those contracted services. Um, this is where I built in the purchase of Hartland, and we have the two hundred thousand dollars still set aside for future park acquisitions. But as we saw, the general fund was a little healthy, we thought, you know, can we purchase, send this all over? And purchase the entire park with eight hundred sixty thousand dollars, so still knowing the two hundred thousand is going forward year by year for a future park. We felt that we could fund the whole park purchase with that, and that was the suggestion. Uh, what engineering really requested is they would love to get work, um, to work on getting the boardwalk permitted this year. Because it has such legal restriction of working over the um, the water. Yes, so they, they figured thirty thousand dollars would cover that permitting process, and then the construction would be built out into future years. But right now, that's, that's what they'd like to keep moving forward, and again, we can, we can bank some of those funds aside and use those for those improvements, or look at it in a future debt issue. Um, they'd like to continue with the per, public works site continued design. So um, said about a hundred thousand dollars should complete all the design, and also towards the end of the year, they're hoping that they will have a solid waste, you know, decision in knowing which direction to go. Parking enforcement, our city administrator, um, thought in, we, and the mayor had brought this up several times, she said it's probably gonna be a cost of a little over two hundred thousand dollars to put into the year. Um, we talked about starting with a hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year, looking at what the future contract is. Um, and also realizing we won't be into the contract for the full year, as we're already into May. Um, but allocating those funds aside, and obviously if we don't use it for that, but wanting to set aside those funds to keep moving forward. With some of that support and that enforcement, um, the, as, as we started bringing in our new emergency um, operations manager. But really, he had minimal budget in order just operating budget. Um, and what he would like to do is now work on getting our operation center set up and up to date with the new computers and all the needs for that. And he felt, he felt like thirty thousand dollars, and what I did ask from him, and he does work for the city administrator, not myself, but I did suggest. That he come forward, um, as putting this money aside for the future needs, because he's really been evaluating it, but bringing it forward to council and talking about. This is what we need to get the center set up, these are the have-tos, these are the nice-to-haves, and this is our minimum. So it doesn't necessarily mean he'll spend that thirty thousand, but allocating that with the future intention of really getting, now that we have the emergency operations centers. Yeah, and now that we have the center up and working, they're all going to training, and we'd like that placeholder to build some of those in.
Um, would this include, I know you talked at one point about, um. Rewiring additional wiring with the generator to.
No.
Make that, then would not be part of this?
This is, this is simply setting up the EOC at the fire district.
Okay.
The, the generator rewiring is in um, excess of probably two hundred thousand dollars is what I heard, yeah, that's. If we did that, we'd come back with a large amendment.
The, the emergency operations center will be over at the fire, fire hall, and they need to set it up, at least this is my understanding that, that the direction's going.
Getting the tools so we're operational when it happens.
Deb, um, any, any uh, update on where we're at with uh. Uh, trying to make some improvements and protect waterfront park from overuse? Uh, are we, is that being studied now, or should we anticipate perhaps some, needing some funds for that?
Um, that is way out of my knowledge base, I, I don't know.
That's, I've dropped that ball, Gary, I'll find out where they are, I don't know the answer to the question.
All right, thank you.
I think they're just trying to get through Viking Fest.
Related to Gary's question, but down the, down the shoreline more. Should we be concerned, and I've asked for a meeting with engineering, but I'm waiting to hear back about a month ago. Should we be concerned about erosion of our seawall and exposure of that entire stretch?
No, not now, no, um, we, that'll be part of the meeting we have with the port. But um, no, we're, we're, it's, my understanding is in relatively good shape. It, it, there's some places that look a little, but by understanding, it's not that bad, okay?
But it is on the radar, it's on the next slide.
Yeah, it's on the radar, but it's not, my understanding, they told me it's not that bad, so.
So, and then this is a suggestion that I um, put out to the mayor and to the city administrator, and they were in agreement, is taking, um. Because it still leaves, if we transferred this, this um, budget, um, this reserve or fund balance over and reserved it in our capital funds. For future projects, um, possibly, you know, eliminating the amount to go for debt in the future. And remembering, this is all council-driven, if we need to move it back to general fund, we can. But this still leaves us with our financial policy, it allows for future development, and remembering, we're supposed to be bringing in taxes to port, supporting some of our future capital. It shouldn't all be debt-supported, so the suggestion is, could we move a million and a half over to some of our capital funds and reserve it for future uses?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I totaled this list, and I totaled our, the previous slide list where you had the over, basically their excess revenue. That wasn't one time, and they're almost the same, so they're both about two point seven million. So, taking away the one-time, you know, ARPA funds and such. So I would like to suggest we add to this list what I warned everybody I was gonna suggest anyway, and that's we add a code enforcement officer.
Well, that's what I was gonna bring, I brought that up to debt, too, we need a code enforcement officer, I don't think it needs to be a full-time position. Uh, I think we can do halftime or three-quarters time, but um, which would keep the, the cost down. But, you know, there's everything from people cutting trees in wetlands to, uh, you know, people feeding their raccoons and to.
Shops in the parking lot.
Shops in the parking lot, you know, all the temporary signs, we did the huge signs with what, a month and a half ago, and now they're all back. Um, so, um, yeah.
I drove through, I drove through downtown coming home from work on Thursday of last week, so the day after we had our parking conversation again. And there were vehicles parked, not being unloaded, not with anyone in attendance, in every single loading zone of Front Street. And I don't believe that was all for Viking Fest.
Yeah.
So I think, I really, really think we need to, and whatever, however, the logistics and the, but I think it's something. Because it'll take a while to get in place, hired, all that.
Well, and trained.
Yeah, so, I think the sooner we do this, the better, and we have the money.
The first, the first thing a code enforcement officer is gonna need to do is our code, which is pretty substantial when you talk about the array of things that. We're talking about, we don't have a methodology to enforce civil infractions here, and that's just crazy, and we've been, we've needed it for a long time. So like, I would like to include about seventy grand in the budget for that.
And the only reason it's not on here is because she brought it to my attention after I'd submitted it to the clerk's department. I said, you're just gonna have to bring it up, and I mean.
I don't know if you were at the meeting, but it was like a month or two ago where I said, warning, I'm going to bring it up, because I think we need it. And I keep seeing on a weekly basis, something that reinforces to me the need, and so. Yeah, however we, however often, or, but, and there's probably gonna be work with the city attorney and working out exactly the methodology. So it's gonna take a while to this person's on the street, so I think the sooner the better.
And my thought is, you probably want to um, set up a job description, determine, you know, the, what the rate is, and then come back to council. Of here's a job description, here's what we think we need, and here's the cost, and then you guys can approve it at that.
I'll, I'll get together with Rob and we'll start working on that, okay?
Now, I'm curious to see how um, a code enforcement officer might offset some of the time that law enforcement ends up investigating. And to like resolving a raccoon issue that, you know, a code enforcement officer could address. So I'm curious to see what that might look like financially and time-wise as far as impacts, so. It sounds like it, it would definitely be worthwhile.
Well, and I would think, correct me if I'm wrong, they would work hand-in-hand with the building inspector. Um, so I'm thinking like, the lady that came in the one week we were there and talked about.
Great, great discussion, she's got another hour to go.
So, so it's only seven forty-five.
Okay, let's keep going, I, we will study it and we will bring it back, okay?
We, we agree to have a conversation on it, Rick, I just, from the standpoint of.
Okay, but it's only seven forty-five.
Okay, so let's keep talking code enforcement officer, I'm just saying, suggesting.
Well, my day started thirteen hours ago, so I don't, no, but I don't, I don't appreciate when we do this.
Okay, Deb, go ahead.
We're in agreement, Rick, to have, have a conversation on it.
So, so we'll take the direction, and the mayor and I will work with HR and our city administrator and come forward with proposals and job descriptions. And, and I think everybody agrees, so what I wanted to remind you um, of, of the next item is. This is, we always say is, when we talk about this, um, this amendment in the beginning balance, what did we not fund through our new program request? So I was quite surprised when I pulled this up, and it's like, wow, we funded almost everything, um, so there wasn't a lot of stuff left over. Um, and so that's, this is what's left and over, and we can bring this back at mid by any, but none of this is up there for um, approval yet. Um, I think the biggest ones that really were under question were the new um, maintenance taxes, public works is in need for those. But we need to evaluate solid waste, because we do not want anybody to lose employment, and so that's, um, if we decide to go that way, so, but those will all come back. So just reminding you where we're at, uh, oh, sorry, did you want that back, Mr. Stern? No, the other slide, um, so now this.
It be appropriate to budget one of those maintenance texts? And then if solid waste is able to cut, to count, employees move, account, then we just reallocate later. But at least get it in the budget, because we have, we and prior councils have told Mike, no, year after year after year on this.
You don't wanna do any more maintenance texts until we figure out what we're doing with solid waste.
And, and I will say is, financially, when I'm looking at the utility funds, I'm, um. It, it brings concern to me until we raise our rates to afford those extra texts, so I think we need to finish the whole rate study. Because some of those aren't, the operations are not supported until we bring in those rates, which concerns me about even the eventual debt for public work, so that's why, um, engineering. Or the public works director, um, Linus is working on developing those, taking all of that into account, but.
Okay, I'm mostly thinking about streets, but.
Yeah, and streets is general fund, yeah, so that, so I, I hear you. Um, okay, so then looking at, um, just, this is what our projected ending fund balance is, so you can see. That we, um, actual funding balance came out at the end of twenty-four, a little over ten million dollars, um, so the general fund is very. Very, been very successful, um, looking at what we budgeted. Looking at what we budgeted in twenty-five, and getting back to council member Tabor, as you can see, that, that's right, it was, we budgeted with the four point four million dollar budget. At the end of twenty-five, um, so what we're proposing by doing, funding all of those additional requests, as well as moving funds to reserves. The fund balance will still be very close with what we're projecting for twenty-five, moving forward into twenty-six, and then also highlighting. We still are well within our financial management policy by doing that, and so that's, um, just showing you where we're anticipating.
So for this, all this part of the discussion, you're gonna come back to us and ask for a council to concur with these changes?
Well, the intent is, is to hopefully have you address them tonight, and then next year we would, by next year, next week would have this. What everything we talked about, if you're in agreement, other than the code enforcement officer, which would be addressed separately. Is to put them into that carryover amendment, so we can get the beginning balances posted.
So.
It's gonna.
Short answer is yes, you're gonna, okay.
Come forward as a, a counter.
Next week, that's what I was looking just at the time.
But I was gonna put it on consent, if you wanna discuss it, I'll put it under other business.
No, no, I just wondering when it's coming back to us.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so that, that's the plan, is if you're in agreement, is this would all come under consent next week? As long as the clerk's department allows me a little grace to finish it in the morning. Um, and then moving on, this will be, this will hopefully be pretty quick. It's just moving on to the other funds, special revenue funds, these are, um, revenues coming in that are restricted. Um, so really, the amounts that we're carrying over for real estate excise tax or impact fees are all outlined on our city improvement plan. And so we're just carrying over those transfers to fund those capital projects. The item in the streetlights is we are still working on the relight Washington, making those lights LED, that is grant-funded, so we'll put in the expenditure as well as the revenue. And then the raised trail grant program is refunding through our paths and trails, and again. And then the raised trail grant program is we're funding through our paths and trails. And again, it has a revenue to offset that expenditure. Um, going on to our capital equipment, these are some of the larger items. Um, a dump truck was put in the budget. It was to be purchased, um, for all of our services, sewer, water, solid waste. So this portion right here is only the governmental portion of that dump truck, 45,000. So it's 45,000 from here and 45,000 from each one of our utilities, carrying that over. I think they had a hard time locating it last year, so they'd still like to go forward with purchasing it. Um, two police cars, remember we purchased at the end of the year for our two new officers. So they continued to outfit them into 20, five, I, I'm getting mixed up on my year. Sorry. So, and we're carrying the additional funds for those, um, cars that we purchased in 24 to continue outfitting them. Um, park reserves, these are all projects related. We just finished tomorrow, Mano Park, carrying that over. Um, park and building repairs. And thank you to council member New who pointed out, we need to look at how we're spending those impact fees. So I will be having a conversation with our parks and rec director, um, not using impact fees to fund those building repairs because they cannot be utilized. So thank you. I appreciate all the extra help that I get sometimes because sometimes it gets out of my purview. Um, the Rob Park Play For All partially grant funded, but moving forward, we just finished that. You had your grand opening. Park Trail signage, I think they're trying to move forward. It's spread out over a couple of years. And the skate park to continue with those improvements and they are only moving improvements that have been funded by the donations and that, um, group that is working on that. Three eleven, um, this is our transportation, street reserve funds, Knoll Road. We're doing the north project. So you can see that's a very large number. Um, they just awarded the contract. So we'll be moving forward and beginning construction. Third Avenue finishing the design for that, Ben Hill overlay, um, finishing the design on that. And the ADA curb ramp upgrades, which are going wonderfully and they're continuing with that and we'll be completing that this year. I'm continuing forward with the Palzable Event and Recreation Center. We are carrying over just the remaining design costs that they're continuing to work on. And that is, that money right there is funded by the PFD for design. Um, the caretaker residence at Rob Park, I'm sure our, um, public works will come and talk about that. They still would like to put up the trailer. He will have to come forward with the whole project because I think, um, they go back and forth whether it needs to be larger or smaller, or whether we need the residence or not residence. But he would like that money allocated and kept in your purview. Again, the Nordic cottages we're continuing with, and we do have a little bit of money left in the public works pre-design. And so that is hopefully between putting money aside in this allocation here, we'll be able to find finalize that design and move forward with the intention of, um, construction in several, a couple of years. So the good news is when we calculate the beginning balance of utility funds is we re-updating the operating balance that we need to maintain in those funds to support two months of operating expenditures. So as those funds expenditures grow, so does that balance we're maintaining. So we, we bring that over and all of the remaining amount goes into capital reserves and whatever small amounts needed for our debt reserves, we restrict that as well. Um, here are just the capital projects that we're carrying over. That's primarily everything being carried over other than we're continuing with the water cop plan, which is operational. Um, but these are all of the projects carried over, all from your CIPs. Uh, going into the sewer projects, I'll still have a lot of county projects out there. Um, they are getting better at billing us on time. And so, um, we'll start to see more funds going out sooner than we had in the past, but.
And, and, and Mary, I know that Diane was going to be working with the county on, you know, the size and timing of those.
Yes.
And we would put some money into somebody analysis. Any update or did it, uh, how that's going?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
I've, I've heard from, um, from Diane, um, she was very, very happy with the consultant she hired. And she said she was amazed at when he reviewed the, um, the agreements and he came up with questions, um, such as, and we were able to actually reduce some of our costs because we made sure that when we were doing the treatment plant, we shouldn't be paying for the portion that the septic trucks are coming in and dumping. So I know she's still working with them and she, she was greatly relieved that they were asking the right questions.
She's asking the right questions. Yeah.
I know that's the big bill out there. I just, it's good that we're, that's returning positive feedback.
Yeah. She was, she was very happy with it. And, um, just, um, then the La Mola siphon, um, we're continuing for design on that. But yeah, the sewer projects for the county, that's, that's the unknowns that we're continuing to, to struggle with. Right? And then, um, just for solid waste, again, their share of the dump trucks right among all of those. And they also pay a share of the public works improvements that we're looking at. And then, um, getting on to storm drain, um, the waterfront park is partially grant funded, but carrying over some of that project. Some of those items, they should all be on your CIP other than the share, the dump truck, which is equipment. And so this is the amendment that's, um, that we will bring forward on consent agenda. And then we will be able to update all of our budget beginning balances and have a, a better reflective budget for our June reports. And this is a quote I found which I really liked, so.
Just restating, you gave us, I'm impressed by your speed of talk. There's a lot there. You're. If we agree tonight, you're going to bring back this as a budget.
Summary, summary entries probably. Yes.
So yeah, so it's, it's a huge spreadsheet with line items detailing where each one of those are.
All of this.
And I will include this, um, a, a, a brief, um, presentation with it if that's helpful. And I can also, I will also give you a cash balances, how I calculated the beginning balance.
Just curious, just want to make sure I'm clear on what you, the ask is of us tonight.
Ask is if you object to anything on here or want to change anything on here, then I can incorporate it into the carryover amendment.
We, one of the things I want is a, a punchline for 70 grand for a code enforcement officer. I said, I want to include 70,000 for code enforcement officer. We need somebody to enforce co, civil, civil enforcement. And I'd like that included. Now's the time to ask.
Well, what other, what other new staff positions have we discussed?
Well, there, we have.
The, the streets and the public works.
We, there's agreement with the public works that until they get the decision made for solid waste, I do not want to hire any public works. Because public works has four, uh, the solid waste has four employees. What are we gonna do? Okay. So go ahead.
One is just a response to the mayor right now, then I have one larger brief statement. Uh, I'm going to continue, I've been after a code officer forever. But I'm going to continue to resist mid-year budget amendments that are not contract or special one-off because we're virtually going to be going into the preliminary budget. And we can think this is a priority, but till they're all laid out at once, we can't know. So we're doing one-off decisions, which leave me uncomfortable. That's just one person. My larger statement that I was planning on making is, and I want to say this carefully. For over 25 years, the council met, Debbie does an outstanding job. We're in great shape right now, which smoothes things over like hot asphalt on potholes. But if we got into bumpy times, I believe this council is inadequately prepared in terms of our ability to monitor the budget effectively with the mayor and the finance department. Because it's good times right now, seems to undercut the business model. And I'll end up by saying this and I'm done, mayor. For two years now, I've gone along with the committee of the whole and I've not complained, I've not undercut. But for 25 years, the council met with the finance department for two hours, twice a month in order to fully understand the budget. We are flying by quickly right now. I, people are tired. You saw the whole spectrum of reaction to this. If we get into bumpy times, this council does not have a good business model for dealing with the budget. And it remains a concern of mine and I will end on that remark. Thank you.
Go ahead. So.
Sure we do. We hold our whole meeting and we hold a special meeting if we need more time. We don't start cutting, cutting conversations short, two and a half hours in. That's how. Um, I would also like to recommend if chief believes it's needed, that we put forth for another police officer. Because as we see, as soon as we got fully staffed, we lost folks. So we need to overlap.
Okay, um. At this point, um, do, is there other, do you want to redo this information? Do you want to do it again? Do you want to have another conversation about it? Should we bring it back next week? Or can we bring forward the carryforward?
So. Two things here. One, at the higher level, eh, and, you know, Mary, you and I've had the conversation, Deb, about knowing better how we're executing through the year. So that in my mind, so that when we're formula, either the biennial budget or the mid-year update, we have a better feeling for where we're at instead of time late.
Right.
You know, so that we could have adjusted it. I think some of these trends were apparent in October, November, when we were preparing the 25 budget. It, it's a back to, um, council member Stern's discussion. How do we get into a better rhythm so that on a monthly basis, we've got awareness and we're, we're forecasting? I think is a goal of ours that we should get to, so that we're not doing this once a year in a massive push. My, so high level goal, but if I look at the specific ask of ads, if I go back, is it page eight? This new funding recommendations? The rest of the discussion was carrying over existing budget items. Page eight is the things that are new, but if I look at these, with the exception of the parking for this startup and emergency operations center, most of those look like same business stuff that we've authorized before. We're just adding to same business or not new business items. Is that a fair way to say it, mayor?
I think so.
So effectively there's two new ads. The rest of it's, hey, let's expect it, you know, we were planning on park land, we're doing park land.
Yeah.
We were planning on paying the utilities for city hall. We're gonna be, but there's two new ads. And so then the question becomes, you know, that kind of got opened here is, is there a third enforcement officer? How do we process the ads i- in a way that's, that we have time to be thoughtful about it?
Okay.
So thoughtful about it. So I guess I would recommendation that those things that are continuing business as usual or this carryover, that those come as an amendment cycle for next week.
Okay.
Order business. The new ads.
We have an individual discussion.
We have an individual discussion about those new ads and the process for doing the new ads. So we can be thoughtful about it and give the appropriate amount of time.
Appreciate that. I think that, I think that's a really good way.
I agree with that.
I think that's great.
Yeah, makes it really easy to separate, like, you know, consent versus business agenda as well.
I, I think that's a, I think that's a, a very constructive way to look at it. So are we okay with this?
Well, it'll, it'll, sorry. So I mistook it. It'll come on the first Wednesday in June.
It'll come on our next calendar. Which actually gives you two weeks to approach this. And if you have any concerns or questions about what going on, I'm sure that Deb or myself will make ourselves, make ourselves available or Rob. Rob will be back by that point too. Rob's been gone before. So, yeah.
I would appreciate somebody capturing the waterfront park comments. It's, should, should be somewhere on here. The improvements to waterfront park, the, would it be at new turf or whatever? We talked quite a bit about it, but we haven't heard much and there's, there's no earmark.
If I agree to that, I gotta find out what they think their solution is. I, last I heard, I, they didn't have a really good solution to that problem. So I don't know.
Oh, oh, Mike, go ahead. How much is in the account that the city controls that is the ports money that they have?
I don't know that either. That's something we will talk about on the 28th.
Well, the, the, the ports money won't maintain that yard. The ports money they want to use for their, their leased land.
No, I'm talking about their, um, port district funds that, that the city has the account that they request access to.
That's what.
That's, that's, yeah, you have to use it only to maintain, um, their leased land. So last time when we used all the money, we used it for the wall that's existing now.
Yeah.
And now they're building the seawall out there, I think. And so they'll, they'll bring it in more detail. But yeah, it can't be used just to maintain the grass there. Okay. So hopefully this next one will be quick.
So are we all in agreement what's happening here? Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so the last item is, um, we wanted to give a city of business BNO update. Um, as we now collected, you know, kind of for half a year and for going into our first quarter. So reminding us why we implemented, this was allowed by council action. Um, it was intended to allow the city to operate and provide existing services and improved services. So a city administrator, we were able to hire the police officers, um, some of the staff software, software subscription to support administering, you know, and, and trying to capture some of those expenditures that are growing a higher rate than revenue can generate. And, um, you know, for several years, the operating budget has been supplemented with some of the reserves, you know, as well as the treasury funds that have helped us not use as much of our reserves. Um, the collection and reporting. So the city BNO reporting requirement is a little different from the state BNO. And I will tell you that has been, um, for filers of the BNO, that has been the most confusing part. And I would agree with all of those. Unfortunately, so much of it is regulated by state law that we don't have a lot of ability to make that consistent. And it was driven, um, to the model BNO by the small businesses, um, group. And really who came up with that model ordinance are cities like Seattle, Bellevue, Tacoma, because they are such BNO collectors. And so that's what kind of stopped it. And that's what set all these state rules, uh, or local rules in the apportionment. Um, it, but that has been the most confusing because what you think is taxable BNO by the state is completely different than the city sometimes. And so, and when we're helping filers that have called and we've tried to clarify that and tell them, you know, we've, we've tried to walk them through. Well, for instance, um, where I know one of our financial planners is, is really frustrated. So he, he's, he or she, um, whoever they are, sits at their desk in Paulsbow and does all of the financial planning, right? Within the city of Paulsbow. The state says, send us all your revenue, pay a BNO tax on it, whatever you're doing. In Paulsbow, you would think, well, whatever he's doing in Paulsbow should be taxable. But what the state law is, the way we've understood it, we reached out to the attorneys and the Seattle experts is, is if I am a financial planner and I have customers in Paulsbow, I am only paying the city of Paulsbow's BNO for those residents that live in the city of Paulsbow. If I have customers in Bainbridge Island, I should have a business license in Bainbridge Island and paying the BNO to Bainbridge Island. And same with, um, you know, in a Port Orchard, they don't have a BNO. However, you should still have a business license because you have customers in Port Orchard. To me, that would be very, very confusing and time consuming. Absolutely. I, I agree with you a thousand percent.
Five or six business licenses if you're just a local business here in the county.
And then just knowing too, is then they get to that apportionment figure. And even though he's paying BNO in Bainbridge for his Bainbridge Island residents, we still are collecting a small share because you have to go through this apportionment formula. So, so I, I completely understand and that's been very hard and, and, um, we will be very, um, we, it'll be almost impossible if we ever audit and do that. But that's where the filers, and I completely understand it's very hard for them to understand it. Because a, a lot of times people say, the state says this. Well, unfortunately, the local rules, which we are regulated by that model being or ordinance is what we need to follow. Um, the good news is the old, much less money to Paulsbow than they would, you know, for some of these others. Um, so that's why it becomes very confusing. Um, so we joined the file local group and really the file local group is only to allow online filers. Um, and, and that's what I was hearing is when we were trying to implement it is I use file local, it's easy to use. Um, this is where many of the cities file their taxes throughout the state. So, so we did that. But they are strictly an online portal to take payment. They are not the data management. So the city is doing all of the data management so far, just by Excel spreadsheets because it is manageable. There's not a lot of software out that supports that. I just met with somebody and they're starting to get into that market to support all of them. Uh, kind of coming up through a database. Um, so that's, so that's what it is, is, is the whole intent was to make it easier. So we are still receiving a lot of, and the problem too, is you go into file local and you pay a $4 processing fee as well as your credit card processing fee. So there's a cost to doing that. If you are, um, if you are reporting zero returns, they charge, they don't charge the fee. So if you're, we ask everybody whether it's zero returns or not, just to send it in because, um, because then we are tracking who, you know, who should be collecting and who should be not collecting. So we do allow manual submittals. They can go online and still pay us through the miscellaneous portal of the city of Paulsbow and just mail in our, the return or email it. So we're trying to make it as simple as possible. We have the three, um, the three drop boxes for them. We did not charge any penalties for the 2024 returns because we wanted a grace period. It was turned on because file local turns that on through their software. So if you processed after April 30th, you were going to be assessed a penalty for your late filings. Um, so the reporting is due either quarterly or annually. And so we, what we've suggested is anybody who generates less than a hundred thousand dollars taxable income a year, file annually. And so we help people with that. Um, nonprofits are exempt unless they generate income that collect retail sales tax. And then that is subject to BNO. For instance, they might sell t-shirts or something along those lines. But the, most likely their income will be below those threshold. Reporting is required for zero reports. And again, we are tracking this through spreadsheets. And I, I've, I followed up with Gretchen and she says so far it's very manageable. Um, but we'll look for a solution if we go out to an RFP at a later date. Yeah. Um, but we'll look for a solution if we go out to an RFP at a later date. Yes.
I assume the annual reporting is for the hundred K taxable gross income, not net?
This is all.
Correct. Uh, B and O is all on gross incomes. And um, what I will say is, what I will say is, um, when I, and I, I think I mentioned this before is, when I was reading the model ordinance, it's my interpretation was different than how the, really the law was intended. So when it came to exemptions, we set a twenty thousand dollar exemption for those who didn't collect sales tax. And how I calculated, I said, well, if you make forty thousand dollars, you deduct twenty thousand and are paying tax on the twenty thousand. How the model ordinance is written, and this is what's written in ours, and we're just, we're just kind of going in the gray area of this is, once you make over twenty-one thousand, that whole twenty-one thousand becomes taxable. So we have implemented it based on what I presented to you, allowing those exemptions to be in place. So, I'm just so you know, when, when it, if you read it, there is that little. But I, I don't think we will ever get challenged on not collecting enough tax, so we're safe there. Um, but just letting you know, that was my misinterpretation a lot, and I didn't realize it until we went to file local and started implementing the program. So we are a little more generous than some of our, some of our friends. Um, but I did mention earlier, is the unintended benefit is every person that does through file local, we verify they have a city of Paulsboro endorsement on their license. Um, what we, I will say to any business owners, um, we had four thousand active businesses listed on the BLS system. And we said, these people did not renew their license, they haven't been active for years. And the business license system said, we keep them active until they call and tell us to turn us off. So even though you may not have paid your license, you may still be active in the BLS system. And that's the state program. So I will say that if, um, so I think I did encourage a lot of businesses to call and inactivate their business licenses. Um, you know, and so here's, you know, there's a margin of error due to timing and a new process. So what we did find is in the quarter three of two thousand twenty-four, we had about five hundred and twenty-six filers. Quarter four, it includes a quarterly and annual filers, there's about eight hundred and forty-one. And in quarter one, we're up to about five hundred filers. So we're thinking annually, we're probably going to be about nine hundred to maybe a thousand filers for the years as we grow and people become more compliant. Um, the revenue for twenty-four is half a year, budgeted about four hundred thousand, collected in about five hundred and four thousand. So a little over projections. And in the first quarter, knowing that we brought in some of its timing differences, um, but we have a annual budget of a million and we collected three hundred and forty-seven thousand. If you looked at twenty-five percent, it'd be about two hundred and fifty thousand. So that's why I feel comfortable that our, that our um, revenue projection in twenty, um, twenty-five is pretty conservative. And we'll continue to monitor it. In twenty-six, we bumped it up a hundred thousand, but.
So, i- interesting information. I might ask at some point for a little bit di- deeper dive. Specifically, if we had eight hundred and forty, we know it's not four thousand people are active. But trying to get an understanding is eight hundred and forty, ninety percent of the businesses that are active, or is it half? I don't know if you have any flavor for what Gretchen's looking at, you know, just sampling. Hey, there's twenty businesses on Jensen Street, we've gotten filings from five. Or, I don't know if there's that, if you have any um, subjective comments on that at this point.
Um, subjectively, I can say is when we were getting these lists from the business licenses, I went in to see exactly how many people are submitting um, sales tax to the city.
Oh.
And it was a little over like nine hundred and fifty. So that's, that's where I feel comfortable with the number.
But this is cap- this should be capturing more, because it's the cert- the people that aren't paying sales tax, which is kind of the, something we were thinking we were going to get.
Yeah, right.
The financial planners.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we will continue to monitor that. And um, we, we see the business licenses that are located in Paulsboro come through our desk. So we're going to get better at kind of trying to be active and proactive and, and getting ahold of people that may not know that we have the B and O tax, but.
Yeah, just, how do we get to that? And nothing's ever airtight a hundred percent. I'm just trying to get, you know, we, is twenty-five percent compliance right now, thirty percent, eighty percent, somewhere there.
Yeah.
And then the secondary piece in this is of, of the eight hundred and forty-one, it'd be, I would appreciate seeing some sort of histogram of, of, you know, distribution of amount being paid. You know, is there?
Is there one guy paying all of it?
Yeah, is forty people paying seventy-five percent of it? And are we, do we have a hundred people that are only paying twenty-five dollars a year? Just to understand where that is and where the sweet spot is from the standpoint of, um, one, collections, but also being responsive to the fact this is a little, for a small person, a one-person shop, this can be a little arnerous.
Well, I, I would say.
If it doesn't collect any real money for us.
Right. I would say, w- we can do that for you unless it's very obvious that one business is a superstar.
Right, yeah.
And we don't want to disclose that business.
Right, and I would, would, you know, if you broke it into fifteen buckets or twenty buckets, you know, what's the distribution? And each bucket has at least ten people in it, so we can't.
So, yes.
But just to kind of get an idea of, of who, where the payers are and.
Right. And that's a good question, and since we have it in Excel, we can kind of build some queries based on that. So, so now that's a, it's a good thing we can look at too. And um, and I know tonight we were just kind of talking about where we at revenue fine and where we're at with filers finding. And I'm all about fair, so I think it's right, as we start looking who's not compliant. Because if one's paying, everybody should pay, and so, yeah.
You alluded to that we probably should update our ordinance, our practice to ordinance or, or ordinance to our practice.
Correct.
That as part of that, you know, what are the other lessons learned? I guess is what I'm looking.
Right, and that's why I was hoping, um, is, is a future discussion is, once we have this in place for a year and I, and when we develop this with the city attorney, she goes, you, you're going to implement it and find some things you want to change. So maybe like after we have a year of activity, we can kind of come back and visit where we want to be and what we want to do. So, or maybe right before the year end, we might have a better picture. So the goal is to continue to visit it and, and getting us better. But yeah, you, we are going to have to update that, you're correct.
Okay, let's keep moving, it's good.
And I think that is it for me. Do you want me to sing? I can, you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, if you've got questions for what you was presented, please get with Deb and she'll be more than happy to answer them. Okay? Um, no, you got to stay there because you've got to do the printer, printer replacements.
That's right. I'm not done yet, sorry. Um, so what we, we've had a problem with our printer upstairs, the receipt printer. The motherboard has gone for it and um, we have the printer that's like a workhorse upstairs that we're printing our paychecks and our AP checks. And what you have to do is you have to put in Micker Toner, um, which is now, you, most people are not doing that, they're buying a separate printer. And what a Micker Toner is, is anytime we print checks, if you do not print your check with Micker Toner, the bank will reject it.
Yep.
It's, and so we, and we secure that toner in our, um, in our um, vault, what we call our closet, so people can't access that. And our, as, and our check stock as well. Um, but the printer upfront is where we printing the receipts, where um, a lot of times we're copying things for passport. And so I've been working with our IT manager, um, Brooks. And we've been talking and we found um, a vendor who's on the state contract and got a price. And what we'd like to do is we'd now like to lease the printers so we can stay, still stay with our HP, which we, which we like, which talks well with our software. And we are looking at getting three printers because we'd like to do the printer front, which is, is pretty much a dead, because to replace it, to repair it is, is more costly than to replace it. Um, now with Micker Toner and that becoming such a different in technology, is they suggest you buy a smaller printer. S- specific with Micker Toner, so we're looking at leasing that. And then looking at a lease to replace our other printer, which is probably, we bought it probably four years before we moved into this building, so two thousand twelve. So it's, um, it's giving, it's getting to end of life. And we are very lucky because we have a local repair guy that finds the parts, but we're not going to be able to find parts. So that's, we'd like to go forward and move that and put in the budget. So that's, and um, we'll bring forward a budget amendment under consent next week.
It'll be the consent agenda for the printer.
Okay.
Okay.
Seems small enough that should be able to find it inside there.
Yeah, it's, it is, and it's, but it's, I didn't, I wanted to put it out there and obligate it, and so hopefully we, yeah. The first thought is, do we absorb it? But I thought, well, it is an additional cost, so we'll bring it forward this way. I know, okay.
Yeah, we're sorry. Um, I'm taking out a council travel budget. The final is Rhiannon for appointed municipal officers ordinances, I'm trying to get you out before eight-thirty.
Thanks you guys for your patience and attention, I appreciate. Questions?
Very good question.
For our final item tonight, city administrator Gelder had asked for some changes in our code to create the office of the city administrator and define the duties of the role. He gave the changes to Mayor Erickson, she approved them, I drafted the ordinance with the city attorney. And I'm looking for concurrence to move this to consent agenda in June.
I reviewed it and I thought it looked wonderful.
Alright.
Okay, so, on to the consent. Questions and concerns of the council? Other than they're all getting tired and grumpy. Okay, seeing none? Future agenda items? Anything? Nope? Continued public comment? Sub shockingly empty? Mayor and council comments, go ahead, mister.
No, I guess, I guess just for prepping for next week, there's an agenda that's been published? For, for the port, port of Paulsboro?
No, I've, I've been racing around, I don't know.
I am creating an agenda with the port, with, with Rob, with the mayor, um, staff. So we have something we've kind of agreed to at a high level, just trying to figure out who's presenting what.
And, and it's probably been seen their meeting here?
Yes.
Yep. They're coming to us.
Yep.
Coming to us. And you, they're, they're good people. I hope the meeting goes well, okay? All right. Any?
Is, are we, are we serving food that night or should we eat before we come?
I didn't have intentions on bringing food unless you respond.
It's five o'clock start time?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, mayor and council comments? I think we're all tired, we need to go home. Everybody okay? I entertain a motion for adjournment, please.
Motion to adjourn, ma'am.
Second? Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thanks, guys.